Back in the heyday, they said they were running so much power throwing at one time. You could feel the magnetic force feel when you walk.
Man, I couldn't, I looked at it so.
I'm just lucky none of it went through our farm. It goes through like money makers. They see money makers all the way out through. I followed them one day.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's call this meeting to order. The April ninth twenty twenty five meeting of the Rockbridge County Planning Commission. Attendants, Commission Member Sabreezy.
Here.
Commission Member Kramer.
Here.
Mission Member Sandridge.
Here.
Mission Member Whitmore.
Here.
Mission Member BB is here as well. In addition to citizens attending the meeting in person, citizens have several options to view or participate in the Zoom meeting webinar as described below. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar. The link is available on the county website to copy into the address line on your browser. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel. Also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you are calling in by telephone. This time we will proceed with the meeting. Uh, we're at the citizens comments portion of the meeting. Is there anyone physically present to speak on items? Unrelated to tonight's agenda, I think is the proper way to say that.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Uh, I have a previous meeting that's scheduled that I need to get to, so my comments are in regards to the bark. Special committee required, or. My name is Andrew Hart from the Cars Creek District. Good evening, members of the planning commission. Uh, my name is Andrew Hart. My wife and I are twenty six year old landowners whose property is situated atop a hill three hundred yards to the west of the current bark lay down yard. I'd like to thank Mr. BB for coming out to our property the other day to see the view that we have from our hilltop. I've watched the Highland Bell School go from a place where families often met to play on the field. To having a solar field fence and a large unsightly lay down yard to now the request to build two large buildings that will never go away. Currently, as soon as the sun sets, five floodlights come on on the lay down yard and they are always on all night, every night. It looks like a high school football stadium. All around our house, we can see the print pricks of warm light from the homes of our neighbors and then a large massive amount of harsh white light from the yard. I'd like to invite if any of the commission members would like to come to our property after dark to see this, you are more than welcome. Two of the three bedrooms in the house that I'm building look eastward directly over the lay down yard. When my two children are standing out staring out of their windows, daydreaming about the future and industrial areas, the last thing I'd like them to have to see. If I came before this commission and requested a two year special exemption to construct and operate a commercial e-commerce distribution center off of my two acres. I would assume that the commission would not look favorably upon my request. I understand that Bark has been allowed to operate a commercial business out of a non commercially zoned area for the last eight years under their current special exemption. However, if any of the nearby landowners attempted something similar, it would be immediately shut down by the county. We have land in the agricultural area of the county because it is agricultural. If we wanted to live near an industrially zoned area, we would have done so. Why can Bark not use any of the already industrially zoned property within the county? The purpose of zoning is to help build a place where we all want to live. My family and the other families in the area are working to build a functioning rural community with homes, cottage industries, and neighbors who support each other. A large industrial facility placed in the middle of that is more likely to disintegrate rather than to enhance our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, any other comments?
Everyone that's signed up, but we will recognize anyone with a citizen comments that that are not associated with public hearings tonight. Yes, uh, test, test. Uh, we'll recognize anyone else with a public hearing or with a citizen comment not associated with, uh, um, the public hearings this evening.
Chris. Check Zoom and.
If anyone online would like to make a citizen comment, please utilize raise your hand button now. Not seeing any, I'll turn the floor back over to the chair.
All right, um. There was some slight confusion over the minutes. Tony, would you like to quickly address the, uh? The previous meetings, March twelfth meeting minutes?
Okay, I'm gonna, um, claim rookie mistake on this one. Um. The, uh, the vote came kind of suddenly and I, um. Trying to figure out where I came down on it. I really had more questions to ask and I felt like I really needed the opportunity to do that. So, um, and talking to Mr. Dryden and and to Chris, Mr. Dryden suggested, I'm gonna use the words that are here. But, you know, you can correct it. It says Thomas Chair did start to say that the the motion was carried. But then I stopped him and ended up changing my vote so that the motion failed. And we'd like to add that to the the minutes if we could, um, before we vote to approve them.
Should we vote to approve them as amended?
Yeah, there was one spare spelling error we had, so we'll we'll identify that as well.
Uh, do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Um, uh, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All right, uh, Chris, board reports?
Uh, yes, sir. As far as board reports go. Uh, there with the here on at the last, uh, meeting with the Board of Supervisors, which was held on March twenty fourth, twenty five, uh, twenty twenty five. They recommended the, uh, Ag Forest District associated with this, um, Irish Creek area as recommended by the planning commission. Uh, also happy to announce they they reappointed Mr. Adam Sandridge for another four years on the planning commission, so we appreciate his service. Uh, there was no TCO meeting nor BZA meeting. Uh, the Community Development Committee held a meeting on March seventeenth, Monday, March seventeenth. Uh, essentially, as always, we discussed the past planning commission meetings, uh, the upcoming Board of Supervisor meeting at that time. Uh, some discussion on the solar ordinance and our next meeting, as always, is the third Monday of the month, uh, April twenty first at twelve fifteen. Those meetings are are generally held, uh, in this location, but of course we do a notice of public meeting if if there's any change to that. Or regardless, we do a note motion, uh, a notice of public meeting, but generally speaking, it's held in this room.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is, uh, Lexington Golf and Country Club Joint Venture. A public hearing application for a special exception application, application for the expansion of the existing Lexington Golf and Country Club, LGCC. At this point, I have to accuse myself because I am a member of the club. David Whitmore, Vice Chair, will take over.
I think we have a, uh, staff, two presentations, one by the staff and one by the applicant.
Uh, yes, if I may share my screen. Apologize for some reason this isn't working. We'll try to get that going here shortly. It's, uh, been problematic. Uh, Lexington Golf, uh, excuse me, LGCC slash WNL Joint Venture LLC, one forty one Country Club Road, Lexington, Virginia. Uh, two four four five zero has made a special exception application for the proposed improvement slash expansion of the existing Lexington Golf and Country Club. Uh, obviously further identified as LGCC. The property at the above address of one forty one Country Club Road consists of six tax parcels within the county totaling a hundred and thirty one point eight nine four acres per tax records. Uh, the portion of the existing country club that is in the county is located in the general residential R one zoning district. Uh, it should be noted that a portion of the existing, uh, golf course itself, uh, twenty one point seven two acres per city tax records is located in the city of Lexington. Uh. Due to the fact that the LGCC predate zoning in Rockbridge County, the use is considered a legal nonconforming use in the R one zoning district. Uh, in October of twenty twenty two, in anticipation for the proposed expansion slash improvements. A zoning tax amendment, the public process of a zoning tax amendment was defined, uh, we're country club defined country club and provided for that use as a special exception in the R one zoning district. Essentially without that, they they would not have had a path forward, uh, to make this application. Uh, section three oh two point five, uh, three A of the regulations, County of Rockbridge Regulations, define a country club. Uh, due to the scope of the proposed improvements, the applicant and staff felt that it would be beneficial to have a preliminary discussion with the planning commission prior to the special exception application being placed on agenda. Uh, the preliminary discussion was held on March twelfth, twenty twenty five. The planning commission meeting staff reported that time that concerns that have been received, including traffic concerns associated with proposed reconstruction of the golf course, construction of the proposed vertical structures and associated environmental, uh, uh, concerns. Since that time, staff has received feedback since the March twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting, staff has received uh, feedback from citizens pertaining to noise associated with the proposed pool, pickleball courts and playground areas. Additional concerns expressed, uh, included the potential negative impacts to nearby wells. Uh, with that being said, I'd like to turn the floor over and and briefly, the the GIS map here on the screen shows in magenta, the holdings. Again, it's a hundred and thirty one point eight nine four acres total. That's in with with within Rockbridge County with the bulk of it being in this area with one, uh, parcel to the north. The area that is in the in the, uh, city that, to be clear, is not, does not pertain to the pending application is located in this area. If you can see, uh, if you can see my cursor there. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Russell Orson, uh, engineer associated with the project, uh, for the country club. I will pull it up.
Yes, sir. Number four. Thank you. I am the engineer, civil engineer for this, and I'm also a member of the club. Number four was just a golf course. You guys have seen all of this, but we'll go through it very quickly. We've got a long night. We'll go through it very quickly for people who worked here at the last meeting. Without further to do, there with the here. I'll start talking anyway. So Lester George is our golf course architect. And he has been working for five years on this layout. You'll see that this layout is a twenty twenty layout of the golf course. You might not.
You will.
That's the, uh, that's the, uh, revised golf course for Mr. Lester's design. It's, uh, increased in length and we have. We've been able to flatten some of the greens to comply with NCA requirements for, uh, tournaments that WNL will have here. WNL and, uh, our club have gotten together to, uh, to come up with this plan. And certainly the WNL golf teams will benefit from having an NCAA level course. And our members will benefit because it would be one of the finer courses in this area and we're excited about it. Yes, could you go to the number three? Number three is the master plan for pretty much all of what we are doing. Numbers on the left on the right, the, uh, uh, really, we're going to really build everything anew. The golf course will be new. There will be a new clubhouse, which is shown as number one on your plan. Uh, there'll be a new cart barn that's showing on your plan. There will be a new event pavilion to the left of the clubhouse and across. There's a a service area between the clubhouse and the, uh, pavilion. Uh, but the, uh, pavilion seats about a hundred and fifty people, I believe. The number four is the new golf performance center. That is the practice facility for club members and for Washington, Washington, the Lee University. The, uh, fairway you see to the right of that is the practice fairway. And the various target green, uh, from that, from that practice facility. We were able to pull the practice facility into the golf course rather than being across the street where it currently is. And it's gonna be a, a excellent practice facility both inside and outside. Uh, number five, new club arrival. Number six, new pools. For now, we're on the other side of the road. Uh, where the practice, uh, driving range currently is. We have the new pool and new pickleball court on that side of the road. Uh, and a new playground, a child's playground. Number nine down on Ruffner is the new maintenance facility. Uh, uh, number ten, and it's hard to see there, but you can see them dashed in. There's, uh, future golf cottages. We are not proposing those at this time. We are hopeful that those will be in demand and that we'll be able to build them and lease them or, excuse me, rent them uh, to people who are coming either for events or just to play our course, uh, so the future golf cottage. Uh, number eleven, we did want to show that we are planting some buffers for screening our neighbors. And we've shown them around the maintenance facility. You can see that over there on the right. And we've also shown that along the residential, uh, uh, homes that are on the left to the left of where the current uh, practice green is, you know, where the current practice green is there along New Cameron Drive. So, uh, that's the, uh, essence of our, uh, overall plan. Chris, if you can pull up. Number two, let's say. Number two is simply a less cartoonish view as we did to the design. It shows the new clubhouse, it shows the new parking areas. Um, it shows the parking areas for the pool in the clubhouse. Uh, excuse me, the pool and the pickleball courts over on the other side where the, uh, driving range currently is. And, uh, we are currently working on construction drawings. The architect is working very quickly on architecturals for the clubhouse, for the pavilion, for the cart barn. And my firm is working on, uh, site plans for all of those things. We're also working on the site plan for the maintenance facility that is down at Ruffner. And, uh, soon enough, we'll be working on site plans for the golf performance center that's kind of out there in the, in the little up. Golf course. You guys have my narrative that that spoke about the purpose of this special exception. The golf course has been there for a long, long time and it's been a exist, unexisting, nonconforming use. We predate zoning and and the county zoned residential when they adopted zoning. So we have been a, uh, an existing nonconforming use happily enough. But, uh, with the expansion of the golf course, literally, we are expanding the golf course, making it longer uh, to to meet the requirements of the NCAA and modern golf course design. Requires that we get a special exception. We began this years ago with Chris and with the county to have a path forward to allow, uh, the golf course, uh, to expand and to be there, although it's been there for a long, long time. And so the county wrote the ordinance defining a country club so that we could come to you for this special exception that we're finally doing. We have held, uh, meetings with some of the concerned, uh, groups and citizens of of the county and and the city. We met at the club with some of the, uh, the frack and friends of Woods Creek and whatnot and explained what we were doing and why we were doing it. Peter Danaher is not here. He is our golf course superintendent. He is by education and by profession, the, uh, uh, excellent manager of our golf course and our, uh, taking care of our grasses and whatnot. And he gave, uh, presentation to those groups. He also went to the local homeowners association group and explained what we were up to, uh, there. We, uh, since the last time I saw you guys, we actually have received our approval for erosion and sediment control and stormwater management for the call, the golf course. So that is, those plans have been approved by, uh, the county and their consultant for erosion and sediment control and stormwater management. And, uh, the permitting that still is outstanding includes, we are renewing our water withdrawal permit. We use irrigation water from the pond that's there at, uh, hole number eighteen, ten, one. And we have a permit for that irrigation, but with our new irrigation system, it requires an update of that permit. So we're in, uh, we're in that permitting process now with DQ for that, that permit. The, but the permit for the ENS and stormwater and whatnot has has already been approved. We're also improving the pond, the, the, the large pond. We do not want to be a regulated dam by the Virginia Dam Safety, uh, Department. So the the cutoff for that is fifty acre feet of storage and it's it's defined as the top of the dam. And so the dam, if you guys have been out there, the the dam is pretty high compared to the water level. And so we are lowering the embankment, uh, height of the dam and improving the spillway. We're also improving the primary spillway, which is a stand pipe and through pipe. So that our lesser storms, our two year and ten year design storms and twenty five year design storms will be handled by the primary spillway and go through without touching the emergency spillway. Larger storms will go through the emergency spillway, but all storm levels will be lower than they are currently. We're, we're, we're making it more efficient so that during whatever event, two year, ten year, twenty five year, hundred year. The the actual water surface of the pond will be lower than it is today. And we get out of the Virginia Dam Safety Regulations by being below fifty acre feet of of total storage. So that that is also part of the plan that's already been approved, uh, for the erosion, sediment control, stormwater management. Um, I, uh, Chris has been working very, very hard and we appreciate it very much, but I recently got his note to you guys regarding the, uh, uh, conditions. This is of course a special exception, which a lot of places is called a conditional use. In other words, it's a use that is okay by the zoning ordinance, but there could be conditions put on it by the county uh, to ameliorate some of the concerns that people have. So it's it's especially, it's called a special exception. A lot of places, a conditional use. So here's the conditions that that Chris has developed and and in speaking with us. And certainly substantial compliance with the plans that that we've submitted. Of course, we would want to, uh, comply substantially with those uh, plans that we did. Hours of operation, he left blank. I kind of leave it to you guys. I think we're pretty good with reasonable hours of operation. I thought about trying to come up with some hours and I put it, but I think reasonable hours of operation, I think would be absolutely acceptable to the club. General lighting, of course, we have to comply with lighting, um, approval, uh, contingent on all of the usual people that we have to get. All of our work has to be approved by, by per DQ, has to be approved by the county for erosion, sediment control, stormwater management. Health department, we don't really have any health department, water, sewer, building department, um, whatnot. So all of this. This is a land use thing, special exception is a land use thing. We're, I'm gonna be back to you guys for site plan approval because this is not in the TCO. And so site plan approval comes through you. And so when I do site plan, that will have specific lighting, specific parking, specific, all of the things that I always come to you guys for. But this is a land use decision and, uh, a golf course at this location. And it seems to be an excellent, uh, use. I think, um, we got skipped over with the zoning and that's fine because now we have a way to come forward with a special exception process, um, to make it a uh, conforming use, but, uh, but, uh, we've been there a long time. In doing the research for for a lot of different things, I had to do, uh, get the V dot information sheets on Country Club Road. And, uh, it was interesting, Country Club Road, uh, when it was taken into the V dot system. Actually, not when it was taken in, but when it was modified in the nineteen fifties, Country Club Road, it says, you know, use of road. And it was golf course and two houses. That was, that was the use of Country Club Road. It was a golf course and two houses. So since then, a lot of people have wanted to, uh, build houses near the golf course and and join the golf course down Country Club Road. And which is great. And and this beautiful course of, of, beautiful course will be an amenity and a improvement for everyone that is lives near this course. I'm looking at my merit too. So again, thank you to Chris because Chris has been working long hours and difficult decisions. So, uh, if you guys have any questions, I would be glad to answer them. I would be glad to sit there.
Do you have any questions for the staff or the applicant before we open the public hearing?
Yes, I have a few. Um. You mentioned, mentioned lighting and I know that you got these standards here. What's gonna be lit?
So I don't know the answer, but surely the, uh, the maintenance facility will have, uh, uh, security level lighting. The clubhouse will have security level lighting. Um. I don't know about the practice facility. Oh yeah, the parking lot included in that. What's that?
Pickleball courts.
I don't think so because I think the hours of operation will be such that we'll probably, uh, get rid of them at dark. If we do like them, we'll have to comply. You guys have an ordinance to cover that and we will simply have to.
I'm just, um, I mean, there's, I guess, because of where you are, there's, you know, there's, there's noise and light and those kinds of things that that could be issues. So, uh, you mentioned the lighting and right now the standards don't mean a whole lot to me, um, unless I look.
It's half a foot candle at the property line is your general thing. We also generally try to comply with dark sky, uh, which is kind of a private. Chris could explain it better than I, but there's a dark sky.
Well, that currently isn't a a condition here.
Standard, I get that.
You're, you're more than welcome to be more strict than the standard, the conditions we put on it.
Um, I know that I can say that like the maintenance facility, we're actually doing the construction drawings now and rather than doing an excess of wall pack lights because they tend to spill outward. And because of where it is on Ruffner, we have proposed pole lights out towards Ruffner so that we can aim back towards the maintenance facility rather than from the maintenance facility out. Um, so we've designed that. Your standards are your standards that you guys arrived at to, to do what you wanted them to do. We will more than comply with those, I think, especially given, uh. It's kind of nice being here on behalf of the group I'm here on behalf of because a lot of my clients are very, very cost conscious. Not that these aren't, they are, but these are very, very quality conscious. And I think, um, that the latitude they've given me on the design for some of the lighting and whatnot, I think will be quite good. I don't know how to quantify that for. quite good. I don't know how to quantify that for you in this case.
Yeah, I'm, these are just some thoughts. You're going to hear a lot more, I think during the hearing, but I wanted to get some of this out and you as well as anybody knows what my next question is going to be involved. The pickleball courts.
Yeah.
As most, some people in this room knows, I'm a pickleball enthusiast and I would love to see these courts. Noise is, has been a issue all over. You've located them pretty close to houses. Distance is the most, the, the best mitigator. You don't have the distance. I see the, the conditions we have right now is only about hours. That's the only thing I can think affected. I didn't see anything in the, in the concept that goes beyond hours. And you know, a vegetative type buffer. That's, I think a, a big concern mine. I, I had suggested some possible other things to put in there if you continue with that and it gets approved.
Yeah. So I've learned more about sound attenuation for pickleball courts than I thought I would ever know in the last week or so, knowing that this would come up. There are some excellent and very expensive and very heavy systems that attenuate sound. I think that we foresaw that we would need some at least vegetation. It does attenuate sound somewhat. If we need to attenuate sound with a specific system on the fence, for instance, we're not averse to that. I think that there are hugely expensive systems out there. If a condition was that we provide the, the same buffer that we've proposed other places totally around that area and perhaps even understory, that would be understandable. I don't know how to define a standard in decibels or something like that. And there's a noise ordinance in the county and we probably are not in violation of that, but that.
Yeah, the complaint, the complaint is not the loud, how loud it is. It's the type of noise that it is.
So if, 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 if a condition was a vegetative buffer, we looked into berms too. The, the grading would take a tremendous amount of earthwork. Berms around those things, it, it would just take a ton of work. So we looked at that. We didn't think that was appropriate to, to show on the plan because I don't think we can afford to do that. We can't afford to do it money, but we can't afford, we don't have the dirt to do it. But a vegetative buffer around that whole facility, if that was a condition, I think that would be.
May take time. I mean, you, you, you're saying if you took the next step, what, what, what criteria you're going to based on that complaints from the neighbors? It's not too late at that point.
It's not too late.
Well, I mean, it's not too late, but, but I don't know. That's fair to the, the neighbors to. Let's see who complains.
A rezoning, if we were in a rezoning, there would be voluntary proffers from us. This is not a reason.
That's, that's what I'm saying. This condition right now is only about time.
Yeah, right.
And, and I think, you know, to some degree that, that affects the pool too, because pools, you know, you know, make noise as well. So it, it doesn't seem to be a, a good location for because of the distance, the, the width of the, the property in, in my.
It's a relatively modest amount of, of homes and it's, it's, it's property that the the club owns. So it's it's not a bad location.
Well.
We already have. We already have tennis courts. We don't have any sound attenuation. We're an existing non-conformal use. We already do all of that. The location's going to shift, no doubt, but, but we do.
Well, then I think that's the, the main, the main issue was that I've played on the, the current courts right there and they are lit too. Play there at night. So I, I saw something, I guess it was the, the Washington Lee Rockbridge Report or something and, and the athletic director and, and I guess I don't know if this has anything to do with land use, but couple of times they said it's more suitable for collegiate play. Now you've mentioned a few things. It's either suitable or it's not. I mean, I don't know how it gets, I mean, is, is it something lacking that?
I golf and I'm not a very good golfer as some of the guys in the back can attest, but, but the, 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 the course design is relatively old and the green slopes are relatively steep compared to modern standards. And so if you mow the greens at acceptable NCAA standards today, our greens will not hold a, a golf ball. Literally they will just roll off. So in order to be an NCAA compliant course, the greens must be flattened so that when they're at the correct speed, they will hold a golf ball.
Well, would you be able to hold the NCAA Division three championships there?
We, it is by understanding that we would. We are designed so that we can. And the, the girls team, per our agreement with, with our new corporation, LGCC, W and L joint venture, the girls team at W and L can have a tournament at that course once a year. And we look forward to that. We're, we're, we're going to have some of the best female athletes in the country competing on our course. And the boys can also have a tournament once a year. Let me know, boys will literally have a tournament once a year on that course. Where hopefully some of us will get to be marshals or something like that, where they will play a NCAA tournament on that course. And in the future, if everybody loves the course and everybody loves to be in Lexington, everybody wants to come here and stay in hotels and restaurants and stuff, and they want to hold a tournament like a, a postseason tournament. Gosh, that would be awesome.
What, what, what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at, you know, and I'll get the question directly as far as, is parking been considered in that type of venue, you, you know, even though it might be a few times a year, people will then start going parking in the neighborhoods next door and things like that if you're not.
I don't think they'll be parked in the neighborhoods. The, uh, we have a, 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 a lot of parking. We are reducing the seating capacity of our clubhouse. It is, it's, it's an old clubhouse and it's overdesigned as far as its capacity. So we are literally reducing the capacity of our clubhouse, reducing the seating capacity, the dining capacity, all of that. And we're making up for it somewhat with the pavilion. We're going to, we're going to have a pavilion. But the seating in the restaurant is eighty, probably seventy, but up to eighty. And the seating in the pavilion is one fifty, I think. And it's less than what it is now.
But it's parking more or less than.
Parking is going to be more than it is today. More than it is today because we are hopeful of that what we are building is going to be a draw to this community.
I'm, I'm, I'm not a golfer, but I, you know, looking at the plans, I mean, the, I, I, it doesn't look like to me you've, you've changed what hole is where they're not, there's no more encroachment now than on homes than there was before. Eighteen, eighteen runs right along. I think eighteen runs.
The big change for the golfers here, the big change is that number eight goes away basically and, and nine becomes a longer hole. And to make up for that, when you get off of the number five green, you will play a shortish par three where the sixty, sixty is now. Then you will backtrack back towards the bathrooms and the, what now is number six will be number seven. It'll still be a par five. But that, that hole will make up for the loss of number.
I guess I'm more concerned, you know, is, is there any more encroachment closer to the homes, the people that are a, around it? Maybe somebody that.
Incremental perhaps, but no, there, there's no big changes to the course.
I think that's, that's all.
You guys have any questions for now?
And with the existing like gas lines and all that, all that's being considered as far as anything that's encroaching into the property.
Yeah, we have, we have a large gas line that crosses the property, especially down there near Ruffner. We have a large water line, the new water line, transmission line that crosses down near Ruffner. So we're slotted between those two things. Yeah.
I'm just thinking about access points and everything else. Something goes wrong.
Yeah.
I had a couple of questions too. So the tennis courts go away completely and it's just pickleball now? Is that?
So that's still a topic of discussion at the club. There are, there are tennis enthusiasts that are disappointed that we might lose tennis. We also have the subject of the high school tennis team has been playing their matches at the, the club. And I don't know the numbers, but for a couple of hundred dollars a year or something like that, they've been using the tennis courts for years and years and years. So the, the future seems to be pickleball. But we have some enthusiasts in tennis. The, the costs are different for tennis court and a pickleball court. And internally to the club, you know, after these meetings with you guys or before these meetings, we have means in terms of the club. We have an, an enthusiastic tennis group that wants to see tennis courts and we are still working through the model for how that works. Pickleball players don't necessarily like all of the excess lines that are on a tennis court when it gets divided up into a pickleball court. We're aware of that.
It's the other way around.
Is it? Yeah, right. Yeah. The excess lines from that. Yeah. But so we are still working through that. We, we do not know. The, the, the pool that you see there is a placeholder. We have no idea what that pool will become. We have enthusiasts that want to swim laps, of course. We have people with young children that want to have the, the, the eased entry and all of those things. So we are still working through. We're still actually working through choosing a pool consultant that will tell us what we should do with the pool. So, so that is a placeholder. We don't know what that pool is going to look like.
And I realize this is conceptual plan. Looks like, is there a road that circles the pickleball courts and the pool and then comes out?
So it doesn't show up as a road. I, I, I don't think so.
Okay.
But there is land up there that, that we certainly look forward to. We have empty land past that, that we don't know what's going to happen. We look forward to using that productively if, if, if we need to.
Okay. And the, the vehicular access to the maintenance facility is off Ruffner?
It is.
And then it looks like how, how do people get to the golf performance center? By golf cart only?
Yes.
Golf cart only?
Golf cart only.
Is there any, you see, foresee any issues with the cart path being in the floodplain? Is it going to be paved or?
I don't foresee that. It's a, it's, it's for a couple of reasons. One, because it's been there for seventy years and it hasn't been a problem.
Same location?
Yeah. Well, I actually don't literally know the answer to that, but generally the same location. The, the floodplain is a very small floodplain and it's a non-detailed study. So there's no elevations associated with it or whatnot. So having been around and about, I've never seen water over the car path there, but don't foresee a problem.
Okay. I know probably it'll come up in the public hearing possibly, but you're meeting with, with Rack and I'm sure water quality concerns, any concerns that you want to speak to? Based on fertilization, potential runoff, lack of buffers around streams, that type of thing?
Yeah, there's a lot of concerns and, and I'm not qualified to address all of them, but I've been involved in the meetings and I've been involved in the design. So Peter Danaher is our golf course superintendent. And as I say, he is, he is just top shelf. And hopefully the speakers will say the same thing because he's come to the meeting that we had voluntarily with Rack and with the Friends of Woods Creek. He's come voluntarily to the HOA meetings. He's available to me to help me understand some things about golf course stuff because usually I'm here before you guys with a McDonald's or a bank or something and here I am with a golf course. So he's been invaluable. He's a professional. So the golf course is being run right now with, with whatever it takes with a professional like Peter to run the golf course and keep it maintained and whatnot. That is not really a change. There's, there's not really a change to what we're doing. Certainly an opportunity for the public to weigh in and, and for you guys to weigh things, but, but the proper way and responsible way and professional way to maintain a golf course and run a golf course doesn't change from what we're doing today to what we'll do if we have this, this special exception. Peter is working with some of the groups and also internally with the design regarding buffers to the creek. You guys can imagine that where you have creeks that are part of the golf design, we're, we're all going to watch Augusta where you hit a shot that rolls back into the creek and whatnot. There's not necessarily an opportunity to have wide buffers of plants and scrub and all of that kind of thing. Buffers for filtering water, turf grasses do a wonderful job of, of filtering sediment and whatnot. And Peter has been adamant about one, following labels for all of the, the different things that he uses. He uses a lot of things that are benign is the wrong word. I, I just can't think of the right word. There are less harsh perhaps. He is right up on all of that stuff and he's been an amazing resource for me and for really the people that might speak to this. He's, he's just laid out exactly what we do, why we have to do it and whatnot. We're looking at, I, I visited Boxerwood yesterday. We're looking at how we can do buffers to the various creeks and whatnot, where we can do them. Boxerwood is an excellent example because our, we're far enough away that we can have a, a very nice buffer. We already do and we will, but where the, where the ponds and where the creeks are part of the course, part of the game, part of where we're hitting the ball and stuff, there's not going to be massive buffers of scrub and stuff like that. There just aren't. So I don't want to misspeak on that, but we, but with Peter's help and with the help of his organizations that look at those things. Aspen Golf has a agronomist that came to the meeting from Denver, Colorado to meet with Rack and to meet with Friends of Woods Creek because it was so important to us that we get Aspen's agronomist from out of Denver to have that meeting to, to explain what we're up to. So I'm not much of an expert on it, but I've been impressed with the expertise that I've been around.
Okay, thank you. And last question is probably not pertinent to the discussion really, but just out of curiosity. The W and L portion of the venture, are they going to own a portion of the land now or how, how is the venture?
So the, the W and L LGCC joint venture is the entity that now owns the Country Club. That's the entity. W and L does not own the Country Club. The, the entity that we created owns the Country Club. And that cannot change. Real quickly. So there's, there's, there's currently an LGCC board. I'm the secretary of the board. Tom Gill is the president of the board of LGCC. We have created with LGCC, W and L joint venture, we have created a management board. And that management board, Tom Gill is on it. Scott Shank is on it. Jack Bovet is on that board. They're, they're the management board of the new joint venture. Anything we do with that course because of our membership, because me, I'm a member, I have nothing to do with W and L. Because of people like me, we did not want to be dictated to by W and L because of this. So people like me and a hundred and some other, two hundred other people like me insisted that if there's going to be anything done with the property, anything done with, with what we're, anything like that, it takes a super majority of that management board. So there's nothing that, that the W and L members of that board can do without LGCC members of that board joining with them. And that was a, that was an important thing for us little guys here in Rockbridge County that are just members, me and BB and others that we didn't want to get, not run over because these guys have been awesome to work with, but we didn't want to get outvoted by W and L and we can't be. And I've shared the operating agreement with Chris and he's, he's, in order to show that because that was important to us. So of course it's important to our community.
It's the financial backing that, that is the most.
It is. It is. They, they, they put up a lot of financial backing and we put up a lot of land and a golf.
Can you have other questions or discussion?
If, if I may, just very briefly talk about the special exception process, obviously it's been determined that it's a grandfather, non-conforming use. The main, there was some discussion on proffers and conditions. Proffers are associated with the rezoning. They are voluntary and agreed upon by the applicant. Conditions are not. Conditions do not have to, they're not voluntary and they do not have to be agreed upon. As far as the lighting, why we put some language in some special exception permits, there is some ambiguity in the lighting. Uh the ordinance that states all outdoor lighting installed or replaced in all commercial and industrial properties and signs and towers in the agricultural residential zoning districts uh in Rockford County must comply with these terms. So there with that ambiguity, we like to put that in there. In my opinion, it is a restrictive lighting ordinance. It's it's not a full blown dark sky uh lighting ordinance, but it is restrictive. Uh as far as the noise ordinance, uh the noise ordinance obviously pertains to only a a few sections of of noise. It's uh Sunday through Thursday between eleven P M and eight A M the following day and Friday and Saturday between the hours of twelve fifty nine and eight A M. And it pertains to uh amplified music, live music, that type of thing, or talking, yelling, whistling, singing or any combination of thereof of ten people or more. Uh so I wanted to be clear on what the noise ordinance would pertain to and what it would not pertain to. And of course, that was of uh the hours pertaining to the noise ordinance.
Thank you, Chris.
As far as the as far as the conditions do, we did give you a a very rough draft, if you will, of conditions this afternoon. Uh in in that text uh associated with the email we sent out today, it says, depending on the desire of the planning commission, there's additional quick conditions, additional information shown on the schematic plan that could be utilized. Examples include landscaping plan showing the details, that's the types, numbers and height of planning of the proposed buffer areas, locations and materials of sound dampering uh that could be utilized and number of golf course uh uh golf tournaments per calendar year, just to name a few. So I wanted to be clear on that.
Where where are they located?
In the body of the email text that I'd sent y'all.
Okay, so they're not anywhere on the concept.
I had sent, I'd given this to you prior to the meeting as well.
They're not already in here?
They are not, no.
The uh the the planted buffering is uh shown on our plan in certain areas. It is not shown around the pickleball and tennis courts, uh excuse me, right, pickleball courts. And if if uh uh that was your desire, I I I would certainly think we'd be more than happy to do that. The uh uh lastly, the the I I noticed when Chris handed this to you about continuing the uh public hearing. Um we don't know what's going to come up here, but we had a schedule and we uh Chris asked that we come for an informal uh informational meeting last month. And so we kind of ate up our month of of what we had in slop to come with to with 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 information so that you guys could consider this for a month, know what we're doing. Everything I've said today is the same thing that I said last time. Um and so I would hope that 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 no matter what is said here, that um we can move forward to the board just because of the schedules. The uh it's not included in this, but I've taken too long because I know you guys are the 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 in order to redo the grass on the golf course with the new species of grasses that we are using, we have to kill all of our existing grasses. Um to do that, we it's Peter has taught me all this. It's a three step process. If you back off of um uh the time period in the fall that we have to do and the and the the grass has to be growing and uh uh during the time that we're applying uh uh the herbicide, then we have to start in July or August. We have to start so that we're all done before the grass stops growing so that when we plant all of our new varieties that Peter is so fond of and proud of, that it's not crowded out by the existing species that are there. So we have to eradicate what is there to plant the new and that requires us. So then we're into uh uh backing off of that schedule and backing off the schedule for the clubhouse or whatnot. We're our problem is not your problem. I'm not saying so, but we had some slop in the schedule and we kind of ate it up with our informational meeting rather than I had made an application to come for a public hearing last month. But Chris and I agreed that it would be best to just come forward with information to share with you guys. So we kind of ate up that month. So I would love to go to uh the board if if it's feasible and we don't know what's going to be said after me. But if it's feasible, I I would love to move ahead.
When when would it cause a year delay? I mean, I guess you're talking, but you could eventually cause a year delay.
It could. And so last year we were sitting in uh June, the end of June, and we were uh uh close to an agreement with W N L. We had a uh kind of an understanding with them, but we did not have in writing all of the things that the club needed to ensure that the club was 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 the thing. And so we put it off for a year uh because we missed that deadline. And so we put it off for a year last year. And we we strengthened all of the agreements that that came to be the uh the uh uh L G C C W N L joint venture. Uh we took the time, we took an extra year to do that. We missed last year and it was literally a week or two where all of the people who had to make the decision were like, how can we kill the grass if we don't literally have legal agreements in place? And that was last year. And now we're at this year. We've been working with the county for five years on how to get the ordinance correct so that a special exception would allow what we want to do. The county has been great. The 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 golf course is an asset to the community. We've we've come this far to get the ordinance exactly what we needed so that I can come and say, I need a special exception for this and it's covered. And here we are. And I I'm hopeful not to uh delay it for reasons that are not land use involved. We're here for a land use decision, a special exception for a land use. There's concerns about insecticides. There's concerns about those kinds of things. Land use, the the county saw this coming years and years ago, wrote their ordinance in concert with us so that we could come to you for this. And that's where we currently are.
Um Chris, I mean, if we continued this the next meeting. I mean, okay, if we did it, if we decide today, when does it go to the board?
The earliest it would go to the board would be uh at the May twelfth. Uh because of because of notice of public hearing requirements, uh the earliest it would go to the board of supervisors is May twelfth. Uh we currently per the uh per the schedule, uh tentative schedule and the application, we tentatively have it scheduled for May twenty sixth.
And what happens if we continued?
You you would continue to May fourteenth.
And that would still meet to May twenty six?
Uh the 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 board would still be tentative date for May twenty six.
So us continuing, I mean, that it's still going to go to the board at the same time?
That's true. I thought you needed two weeks to advertise after the decision by planning commission. That's your new, that's your new protocol.
Yeah, it should state law change. It's it's not uncommon for us to do uh dueling applications. In fact, another uh another public hearing we have coming up this evening is tonight on obviously the April ninth and we have the public hearing scheduled for the fourteenth of this month. So that so that's not uncommon.
I'm just, I'm trying to get to the schedule part.
Sure.
And so us delaying it uh till next month, the decision.
It would still be on track for the twenty sixth of May.
Thank you.
You're on for the fourteenth.
Fourteenth is the planning commission is what he was saying.
To Chris, just to clarify, that means we'd go ahead and advertise as though it was happened on twenty six and even even those is pushed off. So it'd still be advertised for that. And 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 the decision would then you would need in order to go ahead, you'd have to, if you don't make the decision today, you'd have to make a decision the next one or and then if you don't do it that time, then we would not be able to proceed with the twenty six. But we'd have to advertise the twenty six uh public hearing prior to the prior to the planning commission's meeting. Is that correct?
I would actually be the day of the planning commission. We would advertise that on first day law and the seventh and the fourteenth.
That's right. That's right. Okay.
We also could have a special session for this, for this, that only, could we?
Planning commission?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
I'm I'm just doing what ifs right now, so.
Absolutely.
So you'll hear concerns about insecticides, pesticides, whatever. Um I'm not an expert on that. Peter is and he's just made himself available to everyone to discuss that. And he is on top of all of that. But also hear concerns about the pond. The pond on eighteen actually extends over to the homeowners association. When that subdivision was built, the erosion and sediment control for that subdivision wasn't great. It uh uh caused a lot of sediment in that pond. Um that's how things go. This this project is going to lower the dam, it's going to lower the spillway, it's going to make it better for those guys. I am hopeful, though I'm not sure, but I am hopeful that there is room in the budget that we will muck out that pond, including over onto the adjoining where the pond has gotten very shallow due to the deposition of the sediment upstream of us. Um so you'll hear a concern about the pond. This is a great thing for that pond. This is making that pond so much better. And uh uh we're happy to do it. I think that's.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically present that would like to speak on this issue?
Uh yeah, we have a list, sir. Yes, uh first signed up is uh Rob Arbant. Very bad. I apologize.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Rob Braybant, one twenty five Woods Edge Drive. I live about twenty three hundred feet linear from the clubhouse. Two issues I'd really like to address. Access and traffic in and out of this now requested to expansion of this golf course. Well, I don't have a problem with the golf course itself. Traffic is an issue. The roadway country club drives a nineteen foot wide paved road. It does not handle existing traffic well, and I wish them success and I hope that they have additional people, but that road is overloaded. So as you look at planning, you need to take that into consideration. The Ruffner uh road bridge over the the creek, I don't know structurally. Hopefully Orson has uh looked at it, but uh I doubt that that it is sufficient to handle continuous maintenance traffic through there with, you know, the types of vehicles that should be coming in and out of there. The access again on Country Club at Thornhill, that interchange, I'm sure it's going to be deferred to V dot. But this is has to be repaired and and upgraded prior to this new expansion. If we're going to hold tournaments and additional uh, you know, heavy use of this facility, you're going to have buses in there. These buses are now going to turn off a country club up onto uh a new Cameron in a in a poor grade. They're going to be tearing their buses up. It's already a blind intersection when you come new cram and to turn right onto Country Club. There's an embankment there and I'm sure it doesn't meet current sightlines. So that whole access in ingress and egress out of that place needs to be looked at. Okay? And then the noise issue. My house is not where the proposed pool and area is. However, the we currently have noise issues twenty three hundred feet from the clubhouse towards my place, which is up on Woods Edge Drive. Now, there's not that many events that do that, but I don't know that what's going to be going on in this pavilion and the pavilion lawn. In most cases, there's amplification of voice and music and I'm fine with that, but I don't want to hear it. But we need to be able to control that noise. There's been many other discussions in the county with other event spaces with noise. Take the same consideration here. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh next up is uh Cannon Silver followed by Tom Katos.
Good evening. I'm a resident. My name is Cannon Silver. I'm a resident of ten nineteen Ross Road, so on the northwest side of the golf course. I'm also an environmental engineer by profession, worked for C D M Smith. And I appreciate Mr. Orson addressing some of the wa- water quality concerns for for um Woods Creek. Um I didn't hear any mention about groundwater concerns with the application of herbicides and pesticides and yeah, and even the um the fertilizers on a regular basis. I'm concerned about impact on the wells of over a dozen um residences that uh live off of Ross Road along the northwest portion. And would like to hear that addressed and maybe even um hear of some testing that could be done of those wells both before and after the construction and maybe an annual basis to make sure that the water quality. Um there's no concerns in that for for those residents. I also um have questions. What are the plans to access Donnington Lane? Which I understand the golf course has a easement. It's a a small road off of Ross Road on the northwest portion. And um I'd be interested to hear more about that. And then thirdly, I'm uh curious about um we outreach to neighbors to help them feel welcome. Um for example, um will can access be given to neighbors to the walking paths um during off hours of the golf course, either uh early in the morning or later in the evening. Thank you.
Tom Katos followed by Gretchen Sukow, I believe.
Uh Tom Katos from Lexington, uh city of Lexington. And I did provide some detailed written comments. I don't know, did you receive those? Um, yes. Okay, uh I I was a little surprised. It was four or five pages. None of them have been addressed at all. Um. But I, as I I noted, I did, I worked for U V A um on a very similar project for the Bergfield Golf Course. Just completed a couple of years ago over the Davis Love Group and with the Williams Mullen Law Firm. So we worked through a lot of these same issues and um you know, we had some neighbor issues as as you will hear, but but we did work through them eventually successfully. And so people don't usually get this worked up, you know, too worked up about golf courses. Usually they pay extra to be near them. I think they are great things. And I think this is a project that could and should go ahead and and will go ahead, but I think it's it it I don't see it happening this year. And I and I think uh the reason is like, why are we here tonight? A a year ago, I I tried to raise this question back in May of of twenty twenty four. You've got to address the zoning issues first. And there's a reason for that. It's because after, because there's a lot of risk involved in a project and you don't have zoning permission. And you're not going to go to any donors, you're not going to go to members, uh you're not going to go to a bank. I I understand it was a loan being assumed without disclosing that uh risk or um or having dealt with it initially. So coming at this point of just a, you know, with weeks or months with the gun to your head and saying, we got to get this rezoned, it's not fair to those people to, there are some members who weren't aware of this that tonight, just now, a year later, this is being picked up. I don't know how it got slipped so far, but makes you question some ways, somebody on the team uh dropped the ball. Um and um and frankly, uh you know, the the other issue is that uh it's not clear. I mean, th- they made the path for this to go forward a special exception, but they did it before of the this LLC came forward. So they defined Country Club in a special way, being a membership organization um formed for a certain for recreational purposes. They didn't include um uh private school athletics, which is typically a different category in zoning. Um these they're going to be having for credit classes there. You don't get to carry forward. This is grandfathered now. You take that away, you overwrite that grandfather. So they're going to lose all of the things they're doing now and replace them with whatever you're giving them today. If you do, they're going to lose potentially the right to do some things they're doing now. So I I just feel before this goes too far, it needs to be thoroughly I'd like to see all those questions I that I raised answered. I'm sure I'm off base on some of them, but um I think this is just being rushed in a way that's going to harm the course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Sukow followed by Joe DiNardo.
Good evening. My name is Gretchen Suko and I live in the city of Lexington where the majority of Woods Creek flows. Woods Creek is the creek, Woods Creek in the tributaries to Woods Creek is the creek that goes through the golf course and feeds the ponds and provides irrigation um to the course. Per the Virginia D E Q, Woods Creek is already an impaired waterway with low marks in bentic organisms found in healthy streams. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned that the plans for the redesign of the golf course will further pollute our creek. I'm especially worried about their plan to apply large amounts of glyphosate and fusillate on the vast majority of the course three times between midsummer and early fall of this year in order to kill the grass that is currently there. The International Agency of Research on The International Agency of Research on Cancer has designated glyphosate as a likely carcinogen. And studies done by the National Institute of Health have shown that glyphosate produces detrimental effects on the human nervous system and that it can cross the blood brain barrier. Furthermore, there are growing concerns that many of the inert ingredients in these herbicides and even the containers themselves contain PFAS, also known as forever chemicals. Exposure to PFAS can cause multiple health problems, including increased risk of testicular cancer, kidney cancer, thyroid disease, liver damage, changes in child and fetal development, changes in immune systems, and problems with fertility and pregnancy. Now, I know that Mr. Orson insisted this is a land use issue. I should mention that sites that have a lot of PFAS in them, the land can become a superfund site because the land itself is so dangerous that you can't do anything on that land. Like much of Rockbridge County, the course is situated over karst topography. Also, a part of the redesign is on an actual designated wetland. Even if the glyphosate bonds quickly with the soil, something that the superintendent of the golf course said it would do. I am concerned that much of this chemical and certainly all the other chemicals will still end up in our creek and in nearby wells. So I ask you for the health of the creek and the residents who live near the golf course. Please postpone any zoning decisions until these issues can be further studied and addressed. I do understand that the golf course redesign will benefit Washington Lee and the members of the of the club, and I don't hold anything against them wanting it. But an unpolluted creek is a benefit to the entire watershed and beyond and all those who live here in Rockbridge County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe DiNardo, followed by Deborah Woodcock.
Yes.
And if you could, not necessarily you, but previous speaker, some people in the back couldn't hear you, so if you could talk, it's a
Sure.
poor amplified room, but if you could talk directly into it, it'd be great.
No problem. Is that okay?
Yes, sir. That's great. That's great.
Okay, my name is Joe DiNardo. I live up in Vesuvius. I love playing golf and I've played on the country club before, and it's a great course, no issues with that. I'm here basically to kind of do a follow up on where Gretchen was coming at a couple of minutes ago. My background is in toxicology. I've been a toxicologist since nineteen seventy-six. I've evaluated literally thousands of chemicals as well as personal care products and home products over the last fifty years. And I can tell you that there should be some significant concern in relationship to using the insecticides that we're talking about or the herbicides killing all the grasses and so forth. So what I would recommend is glyphosate is indeed a concern about human carcinogenicity and a variety of neurological issues. Some of the other issues that are inert and can be actually used in these types of products to help them facilitate better killing growth or killing rates and so forth are things like PFASs. Uh, and PFASs are exceptionally toxic down to one part per trillion or actually point zero zero part for seven parts per trillion. Have been known to produce all kinds of cancers and a variety of other health issues. So what I will propose is, again, before we start moving forward on this project, I would highly recommend that water samples be taken from the various wells of people who live on the golf course so that we can get a baseline. And then if indeed we do go forward with this type of process or procedure, I'd highly recommend that every six to every six months to a year or so that DEQ get involved and start also doing analysis for both pesticide glyphosate, other types of nitrates and nitrates, which nitrates, which give us some kind of indication of other types of pesticides and issues as well as PFASs and so forth, just to make sure that the community is safe. And it's not only the wells of the people who live in that community. These chemicals do get into the aquifers and can spread and go out throughout our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Deborah Woodcock, followed by Chris Wise.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am one of the people who live off Ross Road who gets their drinking water from a well. I'm adjacent to the golf course. I'm extremely concerned about this planned herbicide application, the glyphosate. This is a dangerous chemical. I'm also concerned about ongoing use of chemicals on the golf course and the impact that that has going to have on of those of us on wells. There are sixteen residences immediately adjacent to the golf course that are on wells. So this is upwards of probably fifty to sixty people. Residents of the county. We need the county to look out for our interests here. It has been noted how we are, the golf course and the surrounding area are on karst topography. This is the limestone that we know and understand who who live here in the county. This type of, these type of groundwater systems are extremely vulnerable to contamination, the most of any kind of aquifer. And we really need to take that into consideration in approving in approving the plan that's before us. So we need to protect our wells and the people who live there will have to do whatever that takes. We will have to test. We will have to bear the, we may have to bear the expense of that. We, if remediation is necessary, we would have, someone will have to bear the expense of that. There won't be any choice for us. So I just would like to note that the Golf Course Management and Development Company is based out of Lincoln, Nebraska. Nebraska is a great state. I got my, one of my degrees from there, but it's not an area that's known for karst topography. There's virtually no karst topography in the state of Nebraska. So I question the experience that that the golf course developers would have for doing a development like this in an area of karst. So, so I add, I add my voice to others asking for more time for review, and I would like to also take exception to something I heard today, which has to do with encroachment on the neighborhoods. It was said that there's very little, there's going to be very little change in that, but I do not believe that is the case. I have a basket full of golf balls that came off the golf course. These are collected from my property and some of the surrounding properties. This is a daily occurrence for us. If you read the if you read the golf, there's a survey of golf course architects and they cite a hundred and eighty feet as a safe distance. We're below that and the golf course plan is going to move some of the tees closer to the property lines. So this problem is just going to be worse.
Thank you.
Mr. Wise.
I just want to follow up a little bit about what Ms. Woodcock said about the wells and all. I think it's a good idea to keep, take track of what's going in into the groundwater and see if there are any problem with any of those wells. But my concern is also, or a question I have, is how much water is being withdrawn? And I didn't hear anything in particular about the irrigation needs of the of the turf and where that water was going to be coming from. And so that's something I think that needs to be taken a look at. And I think that Woods Creek obviously has been a a problem child for the county and the city for many years, and there are some issues that need to be addressed as far as water quality and quantity in Woods Creek. So I think these are all hydrological things. There's one, there's one other thing that I had a question about, and I think this does not be need to resolve right now, but apparently that the country club, I've heard, has a Ross Road access, and I didn't know if that was going to be implemented in the plans so that there would be people, some sort of traffic through what from Ross Road onto the country club property. And the final thing is that the, well, I'll leave it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that is any, everyone that signed up or were recognizing anyone who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. If you'd like to come up, state your name, Magisterial District.
Hi, Jeff Gospel. I live on the golf ball next to the golf course on the eighteenth hole. First, let me say that the golf course and the people managing that, managing this plan have done an excellent job in communicating. They've been working with us with the Greens Association, and we appreciate that. But obviously, we have some concerns. One of the concerns is around the pond. And the bottom line out of it is, we're going to be better off. It's going to control the flood and the property lines, and so that's a big plus for us. But then, when you get into the issues of noise, pollution, lighting, traffic, those are things that have to be addressed. As I understand it, in what I heard tonight, that kind of concerned me and said, hey, I better say something. Is that when I heard twelve thirty or twelve fifty-nine P A.M. or whatever to eight A.M. in the morning, a current ordinance for over the weekend, did I hear that right? That that?
That is just the, sorry to interrupt during public hearing, but that is just the current noise ordinance and how what it pertains to.
Yeah. Okay, so that's that, you know, I live maybe three hundred yards from the clubhouse. Right now, they shut down at eight o'clock. Do you start talking about one A.M. in the morning to have events? And if you have an event at one A.M., you got to get the people out of there, and so you're going to have lights. You're going to have noise. And so I think that you, when you look at this, you're going to have to say maybe eleven, you know, something has to be a little bit more restrictive than one A.M. in the morning for the weekend. Traffic has been addressed. People have talked about that. But that's a major concern right now as it goes through the, the traffic flow just moves right through the greens. It's a shortcut. And so we have a tough time controlling speed right now. But when you start talking about having vehicles coming through for tournaments and such, that's going to be an issue. One of the things on parking that I heard in my discussions, maybe for clarification, is that in the tournaments, when we raise that question, one of the answers that I got was that we're going to have offsite parking and bus people in was one of the things that was under consideration by the club to address the issue that you had. Hey, obviously, if you get an NCAA tournament, there's going to be a lot of people, and so that has to be addressed. So in general, my personally, I'm in support of that. It's a great project and be great for the community. But there are issues. And I guess the last point that I'll make is that, folks, I'm an ex-chemist, but one time was trained in chemistry at the AMI. But I'm not a chemist now, but I would look at what is, what are they using right now? And of course, what has the course been going through for the last twenty years? And then you got the period where you got to kill grass, but what's the future going to be? And if there are the same level of chemicals that have been used in the future, and what you're dealing with is just a period of killing grasses so you can get new grasses, let the experts deal with it. Let the experts deal with it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. We have anyone else?
Let me check online. If anyone is online that is wished to make a public comment, please utilize the raise your hand button now. We do have one, Mr. Hummer. Mr. Hubbard, you are muted, but there you go. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you for giving me the chance to speak. My name is Larry Hammer. And my wife and I are thrilled with the investment by Washington Lee and hope that this ensures by for area residents at an affordable price. Currently, the club has a few special events with outside music. That happens only about five times a year, typically a Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, and a few more occasions. When this occurs, the amplified music is quite loud at our house. It chases us off our deck and porch and inside the house. Once inside, we continue to hear the music, so we drown it out with our own entertainment. This only happens a few times a year, so we're okay with this, but when we hear about the event venue and an event lawn, and we understand this could be used for weddings, that could occur several times a weekend. We would object to this if the lawn area were to be used for music and/or if the pavilion would be opened, which would allow propagation of music. That would make it rather difficult for us to continue to enjoy the privacy of our home. When this plan is approved, we'd like to see assurances that outside music and noise would be limited. Assurance alone is inadequate unless there is a penalty for violations such as fines or suspension of license. Odd enough note, I'd like to thank the the people involved in this for reaching out, the homeowners associations. Unfortunately, there are some groups that have been missed. I'm a member of the Meadows and Wood Creek HOA. We're a little bit up Pinehurst, and we have not been contacted. Would like to invite the members of the Lexington Golf Course to meet with our members of our HOA. There are at least three houses about the golf course and probably three unapproved lots. I also have friends with a person who lives right across in the city side of Country Club Drive, who was unaware until I showed her the plans to build the maintenance center right across the street from her house. So she has concerns too. It would be nice to include our HOA Meadows and Wood Creek and the people on the city side of the Country Club Drive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else online that would like to make a comment during this portion of the public hearing? Please utilize raise your hand button now. Not seeing anyone, I'll turn the floor back to the chair.
Okay, Chris. With no further comments, I would like to recognize that the commission did receive two written comments, one from Mr. Tom Kontos, who spoke here tonight, and to Mr. Sammy Moore.
We will continue with the
Yeah, I think we're going to have another discussion period before we try to do any motions of any type, so. You guys have any discussion from what we've heard so far or questions for?
Yeah, I'd like to, you want to do it? I mean, I think this is the right time to do that, right? If he wants to address some of the comments.
Very quickly, Donnington Ross access, yes, we do have legal access to that. It's problematic because it's through residential, residential areas, and so we are not using that access for anything. We have legal access, but we are not using it because of that. The bridge, Andy Hoofnagle rebuilt that bridge about four years ago. I got the bridge reports from the city, from Patrick, who is the city engineer, and got the bridge reports on that. It is absolutely adequate for the traffic that we intend, and I have those reports if you want copies of those reports. There was talk about the price of membership. That was my concern as well as a member of LGCC. We have part of our agreement with the new corporation that dues will not go up other than the cost of living as, as the, as done by the government inflation for five years. After that, all bets are off, but people like me who are concerned, if we build this beautiful, beautiful course, what are the dues going to be? Five years, cost of living only. That's all we can do. Peter irrigation, we have a irrigation permit currently to withdraw water from the the pond. We are renewing that application, and that's going through DEQ. We have tons of scientists and bureaucrats and whatnot at DEQ that that review our irrigation demand and our request for withdrawal. We have to have a permit from all of those guys to withdraw any water, and we are pursuing that.
I thought you mentioned last, when you presented that the irrigation when you present that the irrigation system would actually be more efficient than the one you got right now.
Irrigation will be more efficient. We are irrigating more of the course. The the ultimate, we the peak demands will be less today than they than they are less when we do this than they were, but they're very similar because we're actually doing more irrigation. But is what the new irrigation systems, literally every head we can control the computer system. And so we only water the areas that need watering. And so we don't overwater the areas that don't need watering. Peter did a great job of describing that to the various meetings and it's over my head. But we're much more efficient. We're slightly less water.
Question. Is the club itself on city water and sewage or?
Water and sewer and all of our facilities will be on city water.
They're all going to be hooked up.
Yes. Yeah. Traffic, the the just because of vagaries of design, we're we're going to be basing our design off of how many people can sit down and eat, how many people come to a golf course. This is less than it was. Certainly on tournament weekends, we surely hope that we have tons of people. That we have tons of people that we have to figure out how to get buses or whatever to the golf course, back to the city to eat meals, to spend the night and stuff like that. We hope we have that problem. But based on the design that Chris and I do, it's based on the Institute of Traffic Engineers. The IT manual is based on how many people sit at the restaurant, how many people are playing golf and whatnot. We're actually reducing that technically. We sure hope we're not reducing that in actuality. We're probably not. But technically, we are reducing that number based on the design work that we generally do.
Couple of things that was I think mentioned that maybe you can address the the traffic thing. I mean, I I think most people have been on that road and I can't see a bus going down that road.
Absolutely. A bus will go down that road. But but yeah, and so I've talked to Alvin and Susan at BDOT. They do not have anything on their six year plan or anything for that road, Country Club Road. They they simply don't have anything on their plans for that. It's a it's a public. It's a public street. Ruffner is actually in the city, but Country Club Road is actually in the county. So it's a BDOT road. Ruffner is the city road.
Another thing, and I can get away from the pickleball noise and talk about the other noise. I'm one of them. I'm trying to, you know, obviously you have events there currently. Yeah. And it creates noise. People have already said that they they experienced that. WNL has a lot of functions. They have alumni weekend or some alumni function this this past week. And most of those things are done on campus. I mean, is this, is there a risk there that there'll be more events that creates noise at the evening than they are doing right now or?
Hope so. So the company, it's a country club. And so if your organization wants to come and do an event at our country club, you are welcome. If WNL wants to do an event at our country club, we are not WNL. If they want to do an event, they can hopefully they will. They will lease it from us at the at the market rate and whatnot. But it's it's not WNL's club. It's not their course. It's not anything. It's it's Lexington Golf and Country Club. And so we hope they come. We have facilities. We're going to have awesome facilities. We hope a lot of people come. We hope your group comes. So yeah, we hope so.
Then that that gets to the 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 timing of things and when they, you know, when you would want to want them shut down. And I mean, I do understand that.
It seems perfectly appropriate if if not covered in your ordinance, want to either cover it in your ordinance, but it seems perfectly appropriate that if a condition was put on at a at a at a reasonable hour, that just seems perfectly appropriate. Yeah.
And that's really what I'm getting at is what kind of conditions can we put there to to address some of the comments that we've already heard?
I know that a lot of the wedding venues, you guys have done this from being in the wet meetings and whatnot. You have a put a time on it for amplified music or something like that. That that just seems perfectly reasonable.
I have a one question for Chris in terms of the comment about the well testing. People mentioned that what I didn't, I didn't even, I should have realized, but some of the properties do have wells right nearby. We did with the warm run solar. We did put some condition in there in terms of well testing. Would that be something that we consider here?
It certainly could be. And I had the I had that ordinance up actually. What we stated in that particular ordinance, I can get that to you. I have it up here somewhere, but if you want to go to your next question, I can come back to that one.
No, I mean, that's really it. I'm just as far as at their expense, the testing being done. Is that something we could put in a condition? That's what we did. With the concern.
We don't control any wells, but
No, I'm saying is that there was some concern that they'd have to do the the test, but you know, could they be that part of your?
Yeah. So Peter did a very good job during his, and I'm no expert, but he did a good job and I paid somewhat attention. Glyphosate, excuse me, Roundup Pro has some PFOS in it. And so that's why he's not considering that for our use. He's using, he is using Roundup, which is glyphosate. It does not have PFOS in it at all, according to the the literature. He showed the 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 label on of the stuff that he was using when he made his presentation to address those concerns. And he did, I thought, an excellent job. Glyphosate does bind with soil and then it is metabolized by microorganisms. So it doesn't generally it's considered to to have a very relatively short life in the soil. And it's not a forever chemical. It is actually metabolized by organisms in the soil. And and that's why it's used in the hundreds of millions of gallons in agriculture. You know, we have agriculture all around us here in Rockbridge County that uses it by the by the tons. Yes, by the tons and and it's agriculture.
You know, I'm my main thing is is that if we could have baselines and then
We don't control any wells.
I know, but I'm sure the 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 neighbors that that do wouldn't mind you coming in and taking a set water sample and sending it off to.
I'm sure we wouldn't mind doing that either.
I mean, we did do that condition.
Can the condition associated with that project say prior to convincing of construction activities, the project owner developer shall provide evidence to the zoning administrator of a surety bond in the amount of $30,000 to cover any damages to the water well on a particular parcel directly caused by the construction activities. Such security bond naming the owner of the certain parcel as payee with conditions of the payment being that an independent professional engineer, actually be number one, an independent professional engineer licensed in the Commonwealth selected by the county whose fee shall be the obligation of the project owner developer certifies as the damage and causation. And number two, the owner of the certain parcel has provided the applicant access to the well before, during, after construction for inspecting and testing. The project owner slash developer shall keep the bond in place until the commissioning of the facility. Now that's obviously associated with the solar project. So the the wording would be obviously different.
Chris, does the county health department have anything to do with checking residents that have wells that are near an impaired creek?
Not that I'm aware of. I can find that information out for you, but I don't believe there's on any requirement of ongoing testing.
To me that, you know, we got what 16 residents there living near this and the creek isn't as bad as when I moved here. But it was pretty bad because Lexington was putting some storm water or whatever straight into the creek. It wasn't coming through the Country Club. And it seemed to, how should I say, get better. But I was out there Monday when it was pouring and Woods Creek was roaring. The water coming down from Kendall, Rushy Hills, it was roaring. And I got out. I went down Country Club Road to the road that was coming down from the clubhouse because I wanted to look up at the fairway. I couldn't see any water. I was going to get out, but I was in six inches of water down there. Most of that water was coming down the hill from the houses there, driveways and Country Club Road. So, you know, I I would just think that the residents, if I was a resident there, I'd get water tested.
The the impairment of Woods Creek, as I understand it, is for fentocin organisms. It's not for chemicals. Yeah. So that's the impairment that the P2 has put on it.
Yeah, you can tell by the smell.
I didn't know that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? I guess our next step is either to close the public hearing or to continue it. How are you all feeling?
Yeah. Just to keep going, I mean, we're getting into a bad habit of pass kicking the can down the road. I mean, I I think everybody's expressed their opinions. I think it's a great asset to the county. And, you know, there was nobody living around there and there weren't any fishers and everything. You know, everybody would say, great, let's have the NCAA tournament. Let's have 50,000 people come to Lexington. I can't imagine 50,000 people in Lexington. I I think the noise and everything, you know, it's noise goes uphill and downhill there and there are a lot of really nice homes close by. And by the way, I think we should ban pickleball. That noise.
I'm not seconding that motion.
You must not, you must be as deaf as some of my friends that play out there.
No, I'm just, that's inside. I shouldn't have said that. I'll strike that.
We needed that, I think.
I'm at you, Tony.
Go ahead and close the
I'm going to close.
Okay, I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion on the on the application?
I would like to. I feel that there's some work that needs to be done on this, on the conditions. I don't know if anybody else has any ideas.
So so if we're not ready to 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 vote on vote on this, and we want further time to work on the conditions, we're not extending the public hearing, so we would just carry this over.
That would be on page two set over. If public hearing is closed, there's a there's appropriate motion. With with that being said, we we would certainly encourage, you know, with the public hearing now being closed. Generally speaking, citizens have been able to make comments at the next meeting during the citizen comment portion of the period. That that that's been historically, so that that will be an avenue. But also staff would certainly encourage written comments prior to that time as we have to date. And then that would allow, and I do have, I do have several other conditions that are that are sketched out, if you will, certainly not to the point where where it be as far as staff level goes, would be appropriate to to draft conditions from the bench type thing. But if to answer your question directly, it would be the motion to set over, which would be on page two.
But we can't do those conditions right now.
You certainly could. Yes.
I mean, I think we should try.
It it will be a, it's going to be a long night already and it's going to be longer if we try to do that, but we certainly.
I think we need a little more time to think about about this. So but
What are we going to think about?
The wording of the of the of the
The wording.
Yeah.
And we can't come up with a wording based on what we want to, what we agree on doing. I mean, I don't want to stay here till midnight, but we, you know, as we take a, you know, break.
For example, or is there any interest as written in the emails and any interest to have some ideas on sound proofing devices associated with pickleballs or location of sound proofing devices? Is there interest of the planning commission to have additional details on what buffers and where those buffers would be? Hours of operation. Obviously, no parking along Country Club Road, New Cameron. Generally speaking, associated with, and to be clear, this is this is for a country club. But still, you with associated with a wedding event venue or special event venue, I should say. Talk about amplified music. One common condition associated with that one is all amplified music, but must be within a closed structure. And then all site activities, all site activities, all site activities will be concluded by blank hour. So if we want to do it tonight, certainly here here to assist that, but it it might be it is, it can be problematic legislating from the bench.
I mean, if we postpone it, I mean, it's not going to delay anything, is it? Because it's
As long as they notice the 26, is that right? The next board meeting on May?
That that is correct. We're well past the deadline. In fact, it looks like today was the deadline to advertise for the May 12th meeting. Excuse me, for the April 28th meeting would have been in today's newspaper in the 16th. So then you're talking about the dealing with it on the 12th of May or the 26th of May. It would it would potentially cause a two week delay.
That's that's reasonable. But we're trying to get this right.
Yeah, I'd rather be right than make a quick decision. But I was just bringing up like pickleball. You just put some trees around from, you know, the ground up to 15 feet.
There are other medications that
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I sent some stuff to Chris already, so.
Yeah, people could just just correct me. If if we delay it, it would be, it would be a motion. It would be a motion. Make a motion to set this matter over to the next planning commissioner on May 14th, 2025. And then the tentative date for the board of supervisors would be May 26th versus May 12th, I should say. With the board, right?
We have a motion.
I make a motion to set this matter over to the next meeting of the planning commission on May 14th of 2025.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries with a
It's just probably best always ask, is anybody opposed? Just to have that on record since it's not a real call.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries with the four to four vote.
Four to zero.
Zero.
Four to zero, excuse me.
Yeah, no, you got it. And I would encourage planning commission, obviously, as always, to get with staff on, you know, we will draft some conditions for your consideration next month. We will do that sooner than later, but with that being said, if there's anything y'all would like to see in those motions or the draft conditions, please let us know as soon as possible.
Okay. Before we go to the next agenda item, I'm going to turn it back over to the chairman.
Yeah, I hear a call for a break. Let's take a five minute recess. Five minute recess.
Well, I think, I mean, I, you know. Well, I mean, I just didn't think we hadn't, we hadn't thought at the time. Come back with what, what, you know, precedent setting a different precedent. He said, but
legislating from the bench, like you say.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I know that's I don't want to go to jail.
Right, right, right. Yeah. Yeah, that and the land. And I want to get back to my notes from the comments.
Yeah, I'm sorry, did I drag it with me? Yeah, yeah.
The one there is the one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you probably got shit on. Move all my shit out of the way. We're using my stuff. I think it is.
So right now, do I keep things away the art?
Is what it is, yeah.
I told him I don't want to do this until May, so give me some May to get some time together. Cause I, what we want to do, I want to present what the act community's view on this.
Just too much going on.
Yeah.
Time we get, we're doing Abigail Logan, that'll be quick.
Yeah, it's all firm. And I think the issue, I think it's because the woman saying. Yeah, and, and. Story was a bit, was, was sympathetic. They were sympathetic for it. And so, and so I think that the feeling generally, I mean, I'm not gonna say what they're, how they feel, but there were, there were several people on the board of supervisors who said, well. Yeah, but she, she said they built the fence, but then the, and the cows came next day and trampled it down because they'd eaten her hay before and they wanted good hay. That's what her story was. And, and I don't, well, and I don't know, and I, and I don't know what she's put up, what she thought that's where there was, because there's a fence, there's, there's statues. What offensive. So I mean, so that's the only reason why I'm letting you know this is before. Well, I think when they saw that Augusta and Rocky Command, they said, well, why don't we, and that's the thought there. And so my report would talk about the other counties that have these things out and what the farmers here think. And so, and so, and so it'll be straightforward. But, but, but if it looks like it's an issue, I think it might be good to, if not you, someone else. Yeah. It'd be better if somebody from the farming community gave their side of the story as opposed to me going through it. I mean, Tom could come up with it, but whoever. Yeah, but it, but we really want, because if the feeling's strong about it, know that we want to, I think it'd be good to have somebody come and talk about it. Then, then we'll know if we schedule, you know, whether we schedule something. Yeah, and I think so, yeah. So the report will be that, and then they'll insert me, okay, go ahead and, you know, draft an ordinance and do a public hearing. Or we could say, well, you could even have an, even if it's strong enough about, we can even hold a work session prior to doing anything like that. That's right. My only thing, we just got one person running, you know, this. No, that's right, Jay's, Jay's. So Jay's running again. He doesn't, somebody filed running against him. Dan's the one that's gonna have several pieces. Oh, no, well, because, because they're not meeting. Yeah, you know, some, some people, some people are kind of, I wouldn't say worked up about it, but they were. Nobody takes a strong beat one way or the other. So it's gonna be whatever the board supervisor is. Yeah, we'll tell them about what this is if they want to go ahead with something. And I, and actually, I'll reach out to the farm dude, because I know y'all is ones. My wife sent a, my wife sent a text to your daughter that's hit your phone number, so I don't know. Cause I said, well, cause I looked at it, I said, well, I don't have it. No, I said, no, I don't have it.
That's why I brought that up. Now there's 16 houses, that's a whole part.
Solar.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we can add that.
It's not, it's not gonna work. It's not the public hearing.
Yeah, it's not, but yeah, some people, they thought, no, there was too much one tonight. He's right.
It was good seeing you.
Yeah, good for seeing you.
So is, is it closed? So maybe I can't comment on it, except in the public hearing.
Yeah.
I grabbed yours, I think.
He's in the restroom, he's coming all mail.
Yes, and of course, it'll be a minute or less. Tony will be a minute or less.
We'll wait for Tony. It seems silly, but should I grab the, hit the gavel? You ready, Tony?
Go ahead.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Abigail C. Logan, public hearing application for a zoning map amendment from the general business B1 zoning district to the agricultural and general uses A2 zoning districts.
That is correct. Uh, Abigail, I'm gonna share my screen here, bear with me here. Uh, Abigail C. Logan, 262 Tinkerville Road, Glasgow, Virginia, 24555, had ba- has made an application for a zoning map amendment. The properties are owned by Abigail C. Loca- uh, Logan and are located on the south side of Tinkerville Road, uh, further identified as 684, approximately point, point 52 miles east of the intersection of South Lee Highway. Uh, properties are identified and outlined in magenta on the screen. Let me go ahead and zoom down on that a little bit. Zoom out when we're talking about zoning. Uh, properties identified as tax map number 96 dash A dash 23A, and, uh, that consists of 16.98 acres per tax records, and the second smaller parcel located around the driveway, uh, identified as 96 dash A dash 23B, point 87 acres per tax records, totaling a, uh, total of, uh, 17.85 acres. Properties are located in the Natural Bridge Magisterial District. Uh, the application is rezoned, two parcels of land from the general business. Pull that up here real quick. Uh, the red, the, the, the dark red on the map is the business zone, existing in general business zone, and the, uh, portions that you can see the aerial photo, or, or if I do this, it'll be better. Uh, the white on the map is the agricultural and general use district. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Ms. Logan, uh, to review the, uh, some, uh, brief details of the application. Dr. Logan, excuse me.
Hi, I'm, I'm Abigail Logan. How are you guys doing? It's been a crazy night, huh? Um, basically, the area that we're in is B1. At the time of buying the property, we were under the impression that it was already agged because, um, actually, as we were buying the property, Mr. John Repair was nice enough to reach out to us and ask him if he could continue, um, farming, and we absolute want someone taking care of the land in that area. Um, when they got back to us, um, the realtors about it, it was in B1, and I was just surprised by that. There's no businesses in our general area besides the gas stations that border the, um, five, um, Route 11 there, so I, I, we just wanted to continue our agricultural uses of it. It doesn't seem to make much sense for it to be in B1, um, and we'd like to expand that. We've been talking about greenhouses and I've been trying to be convinced to get a chicken coop, although that's probably not gonna happen.
Is that it?
That's all I got. Sorry.
All right, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, um, you gentlemen have any questions or comments? Uh, of the applicant.
Pull it up again. Um, I mean, I just, I know one of the, uh, letters that I think I read said that that the property next to it was not zone B1, and I think it's, that's to correct that. It looks like to me that the properties around it.
All the one.
It is, it's, yeah, except for that one on the, on the backside. Um, Chris is more, you know, a question for you. It's one I've already talked to you about. And I don't know whether you've talked to anybody else here about that. Can you, I mean, why can't they continue to farm it the way they are right now?
Uh, agricultural is, they certainly have. It's considered a non-conforming use. Um, as discussed, it's considered a non-conforming use, so the, the, at the same scale, uh, they would have the ability to continue the agricultural uses at the same scale, but when you're talking about building, uh, you know, you know, a greenhouse or, or a barn even, we would not have, we, the planning and zoning staff would not have the authority uh, to sign off on a, uh, barn construction for the property because it's considered a non-conforming use and expansion of a non-conforming use is not, not provided in code of Virginia nor the, the land developer regulations.
And you did mention about like a greenhouse or something like that would be, fit into that category?
Uh, yes. Uh, you know, oddly enough, I think a commercial greenhouse is, uh, is a permitted use in the business zone. I have to check on that, but that would not, you, you would not build a, oddly enough, this is weird, zoning is imperfect, but you would not build a, a personal greenhouse for those purposes, nor a barn or any other type of agricultural activity.
Is there any other benefits to, I, I, and we've talked about this before. I mean, I don't know how you all, I mean, we're giving up some business property in the county.
I understand that, and that parcel right there is farmland. It's never gonna be a business on that thing.
And that, that's what we had talked about.
Does that mean we have a bigger problem that we need to work on?
Well, we, we have business-owned property that, that is, is, uh, utilized for agriculture all over the place. One of the largest ones, uh, is the, um, interchange, 81 interchange between Lexington and Buna Vista. There's probably 500 to 700 acres zoned, either business or industrial there, and you have to start wondering, you know, why is it, why, why is this area, why is that area not developed, especially along an interstate directly adjacent to the interstate interchange in that case? Uh, and, and really just the, the, uh, bare bones of that conversation is lack of public water and public sewer. Of course, you and I talked, um, on this particular road, it's even more unusual because, uh, per posted, per uh, law, I should say, any trucks, I believe, 40 feet or greater are prohibited to use this section of Tinkerville Road and then therefore Sailing's Fountain. So that further is detrimental to any type of business activity, depending on the state.
Okay, I, I, I don't want to extend this any longer. It has to be, but I think it's something that we need to bring up maybe at a future meeting and, and look at this. You talk about the, I mean, to me, it makes sense to put business at each of the interchanges.
Without public water, public sewer, you're, 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 you're doing an exercise.
Then we should do it till we get rid of them all, because, I mean, she, she has a legitimate, um, request here and, you know, now.
So, so as, as, as discussed, it's actually easier for landowners, landowners have the ability, and in fact, it's my understanding, landowners have the right to make a rezoning application. Uh, and then you have to look at, uh, it's actually easier for landowners to make a zoning application than the county initiative. There has to be some sort of, some, my understanding, some sort of substantial change, uh, whether that be in the comprehensive plan or running those public water and public sewer to that area. Uh, you, you know, you, you would, you would find some resistance, I'm safe to say, in some parts of the county, if the county's initiative was to start downzoning property without some substant- without some substantial change, uh, associated with examples provided for before.
Okay, um, I think that's the discussions, gentlemen. All right, uh, at this time, we're gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically present who would like to speak?
Uh, we have two people signed up. Um, let me stop sharing real quick. First up is, uh, Anne Lebrant, I believe, I apologize, I can't read the name, about Doug Ayers. Doug Ayer or Anne Schrefer LeMott. Am I even close to that? They may have incorrectly signed up for this particular application. So at this time, we'll recognize anyone that would like to speak.
Would anyone like to speak about this?
If you could come up and speak in the microphone, the reason I ask is we can hear you in here, but once you go to Zoom, you can't hear a thing.
Okay, yes, sir. Maxine Fogo District. Pull the map back up.
Yep, absolutely.
Those that don't know that, I sat with y'all for 15 years. I sat on account of supervisors for eight years. And we went through this rezoning for this stuff and, and, but I have no problem with what she's doing. I think it's probably right, even at the time when we rezoned the county, we saw that that was not, there's a lot of farmland there that has no purpose, in my opinion, to being in.
Business.
Business. Now you're going to zone out a piece though here, and you're on both, on the east side of it. It's gonna be a piece of business. Making sense to me to do. That's gonna be hard. You say something can happen. You never say that, that little piece of land between, on the east side of this rezoning, won't be a business. Are you following what I'm getting at there?
I do, yeah.
I know how you get around that, unless you went to Mr. McElroy and asked him if he wanted to rezone his, which he probably would say, okay.
Again, Chris just said it's customer or landowner driven, so that person to the east would probably.
If Mr. McElroy was to come in and say, hey, I want to rezone mine, you don't think, I mean, I'm pretty sure he probably, I think he wanted to build a chicken house, sir. I couldn't do it at one time. A, a turkey house, you know, I mean.
Okay.
And, and that was not to zone. It may have, may have required, and it's unusual that we're having commentary during a, a citizen comment, but with that being said, uh, uh, it was not a, it, it could have been a zoning issue. I'll have to go back and look exactly where it was, but it's my understanding, uh, from the time, working, working with him at the time, he had the desire to have an entrance directly off of Tinkerville Road on this location. That was an unimproved entrance. B dot could not allow him to use a, a, another, it's problematic to get a a commercial entrance permitted along a windy road like Tinkerville, which is another revocation for having businesses in there, low-volume commercial. If I remember correctly, he was able to get a, a entrance off of the other part of Tinkerville Road, but it was a much longer driveway than, than he was anticipating.
That's right.
So, so I, I'm not, I don't think that was in this location of a business zone, so I don't think it was a, a zoning issue in that case.
I'm not opposed to this. I think it's a good thing. I just think that there's a bigger picture, like you were talking, Tony, there's just something here that's not quite right. I mean, some of that land to the north goes straight down toward land that we own, you know, and it's just like, it's in the middle of nowhere. Some of this business zone stuff, Doug, if you narrow that down, you'll see that it takes in a whole lot of land there. I don't know how many hundreds of acres it is, but it's gotta be a sizable tract of land that's own business that will never be business.
I agree.
That's probably it right there, Chris. Should we check the Zoom and?
Uh, yeah, should anyone else like to make a, a comment? Uh, yeah. So if anyone else would like to make a, a comment, feel free. As far as Zoom goes, I apologize, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. If there's anyone online that would like to make a comment, please utilize raise your hand button now. Not seeing, turn the floor back over to the chair.
Uh, with no further comments, I would like to recognize that the commission received written comments from, uh, Mr. John Repair. Are there any objections to closing the public hearing? Would the, the commission members like to continue the public hearing to the next party? Let's get it done. So, uh, with no further public comments, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, discussion, gentlemen.
I'm ready to make a motion. All right. I make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the application to rezone the property is located at two sixty-two Tinkerville Road, Glasgow, Virginia, two four five 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 on the south side of Tinkerville Road, which is Route six seventy-four. Further identified as tax map number ninety-six dash A dash twenty-three A and ninety-six A dash twenty-three B totaling seventeen point eight five acres per tax records from the general business B one zoning district to the agricultural and general use A two zoning district be approved.
That's it.
We have a, uh, motion by David Whitmore, seconded by Bob Kramer. At this time, I'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. If the vote is unanimous, the motion carries unanimous.
Okay.
All right. Uh, moving on, item number seven on our list, Cassandra V. Harding, public hearing, application for a special exception permit to develop and operate a dog training facility, private school in the agricultural and general uses A two zoning district.
Let me catch up with y'all real quick. Uh, Cassandra B. Harding, four oh five McClure Boulevard, Fairfield, Virginia, two four four three five, has made an application for a special exception to develop and operate a dog training facility, private school. The address, uh, the property at the, at four oh five McClure is owned by Cassandra B. Harding and is located near the south side of McClure Boulevard, approximately point seven seven miles east of the intersection, McClure Boulevard and Sterrett Road. Property is further identified. I'm going to share my screen real quick. Uh, property is further identified as tax map number, uh, thirty-nine dash A dash three A and consists of seven point zero seven acres per tax records located in the Magist-, uh, Walker's Creek Magisterial District. Uh, the property is located in the agricultural and general use districts per section six oh three point oh three dash twenty of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. Private schools, excuse me, schools comma private are used by special exception in the A two zoning district. Uh, while the regulations do not define private schools, section three oh one of the regulation states, except otherwise provided there here on, uh, all words shall have the customary, uh, dictionary meaning. Per Webster's Dictionary, a school is defined as an organization that provides instruction. Uh, furthermore, Webster's Dictionary defines a private school is a school that is established, conducted, and primarily supported by a non-governmental agency. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Ms. Harding to go over greater detail, uh, the, the proposed, uh, the, excuse me, the application.
Hello, my name is Cassandra Harding and I live at four oh five McClure Boulevard in Fairfield, Virginia. Thank you for allowing me to come in before you to discuss my special exception request for a private school of specialized instruction on my property. I'm a multi-certified dog trainer specializing in the raising and training of working service dogs and therapy dogs. Having a business license would allow me to not only go to an owner's home to train their dogs, but also invite clients to my training facility on my property for additional training that requires heavy bulky equipment, uh, that is difficult to bring in an automobile such as wheelchairs, ramps, and walkers. Additionally, my property allows for a fantastic opportunity for distraction-free training due to being in an enclosed, climate-controlled, soundproofed building with rubber shock absorbing flooring. As a disabled person myself, training service dogs and therapy dogs is very personal to me. I have retired from nursing due to my disabilities and as a single mother and now empty nester, I have been able to dedicate most of my time to the art of dog training and supporting the Rockbridge community with my therapy dogs and community nursing homes and hospices. My therapy dog, Henry, and I became a volunteer staff with Connections Plus Hospice, and I've enjoyed making visits to local hospice patients in this community. I've also enjoyed participating in local free health events with my, um, both my dogs, uh, visiting special needs childrens in homes and, um, in schools and sharing my therapy dogs with local college campuses during final exams. I'm passionate about the science of positive reinforcement dog training and the joy of providing training to service dog prospects for my clients with disabilities. I have completed three different dog training certifications and continue to find joy in continued education specifically in training dogs to help a person with a disability to leave, lead a more independent life. Recently, I built a training facility on my property. The original intention was to have the building for my personal training use as I have three of my own dogs, two of which are fully trained service and therapy dogs, and I have, and have multitudes of AKC titles. I additionally invite and hang out with my dog training friends on my property to work their dogs on Fridays and Sundays. We trainers often laugh that our dogs get the least amount of training due to spending most of our time training other people's dogs. These get togethers are not part of my business, but inevitably word has gotten out about my facility and I am starting to get a few limited requests to train service and therapy dogs locally. My property is seven fully fenced acres, broken into four individually fenced sections within that acreage. It is extremely private up on a hilltop with no visible neighbors. And my instruction occurs inside my finished metal training building. The property is surrounded by Ridge Valley alpacas grazing land and Mountain View farm grazing land. There are at least five working livestock guardian dogs and many pet dogs in my immediate vicinity. Quite frequently, there are some sorts, some level of barking that occurs in the surrounding properties, and I have my own personal dogs as well. But I have very little worry that there will be any nuisance noise due to space and distance from other residences as the property is incredibly private, the quality of the soundproofing of the building, and the fact that all the dogs are crated in cars until it's their turn in the building. There is an easement and I would wish to set some mind at ease related to that. I've had two separate attorneys review the easement paperwork. Both Mr. Lee Taylor and Mr. Ken Gibson have assured me that there are no business restrictions on the easement. Mr. Taylor advised that I have the easement surveyed last year, which yielded some very interesting facts. If there are further questions related to that survey, I would be happy to try to answer them. I do want to assure everyone here that I am retired and I absolutely do not want to be busy. I do not need income and if I need to teach offsite, I will do that. At most, we're discussing a few additional cars up and down the easement for a week if my request is granted. The increase in activity will likely be virtually unnoticed. I went to great expense last year to tar and chip the entire long driveway to help with dust and noise, and I'm happy to plant some landscaping near my neighbor's shed and fence if they feel like that would, um, offer an additional buffer. Uh, my neighbor's home is on the opposite side of their five acre property, so I don't feel like the insignificant increase in activity on the easement should be of much concern. So please allow me to break down my, my requests. I'm seeking permission to hold a business license in Rockbridge County for individual lessons in my training facility a couple of times a week. And number two, and sounds less likely, will be permitted, um, to allow my trainer days that I have, um, privately happening, um, where it's not part of my business, um, to allow local clients that might be interested in that dog sport to come up and see what we're doing and see if they would have any interest. Um. Outside of the disc sports, um, all of the active activities would be within the soundproofed building. We do rally, we do, um, competition obedience, um, that kind of stuff. So it's all inside the building. In total, I would expect the building to be utilized for business approximately two to three times a week for a lesson here or there. As a former nurse and now service dog instructor, nothing brings me more pleasure than helping a handler to train a service animal to mitigate their owner's disabilities. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you, Cassandra. Um, hey, before we open the public hearing, this would be a good time to ask, uh, Cassandra questions. Let's, uh, um. Um, gentlemen, anybody have any questions? A couple of questions, and it's, it goes back to, uh, the hours of operation. Um, what, what would you like to have for hours of operation?
Are we, um, just talking about my individual lessons or are we talking about the?
Individual training activities.
Individual training activities. So just private lessons.
I think so. Yes.
So that's, um, typically nine to five.
Nine to five.
And I really don't teach more than one lesson a day.
Okay. All right, um. Gentlemen, jump in if you have, uh, uh, thoughts about the group training and the disc throws. Anybody have any thoughts about any of that stuff? There's no boarding allowed. There was some issue about one, one neighbor wrote in a letter that there's a website or a Facebook post or something where you did some boarding. You can, this, this application does not allow for any boarding.
Yeah, that's a pro bono case. Um, I have somebody who's had five heart attacks and he's wanting his lab to be trained for a service animal. And I told him I don't have a business license yet, but I'm just doing it pro bono for him.
Uh, okay. Group training set to go ahead.
How would you define boarding? I mean.
Sleeping over.
Is that, I mean, is it that simple?
I, I mean, boarding, again, if you, uh, if it's not defined. Sorry, I didn't mean to unplug that.
Hey, Chris, would it be appropriate to go through, you know, the potential motion and ask these questions? So we?
At this time, I think it's more appropriate to hold a public hearing than have that type of discussion.
Okay. All right. Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Um. Gentlemen, any more discussion?
I just had a question. What is, uh, the, the, the disc, uh, training or competition, just throwing frisbees and dogs catching it?
Yeah, you paint, paint it out on the grass and, um, there's all sorts of different games of getting the dog to catch it in certain quadrants and things like that.
The one, one of the comments, um, was concerned about noise from that activity. Would that, uh, necessarily, like a dog bark more by doing it or?
My just dogs get pretty excited when, when, but I have three just dogs as well, so, um, that's happening up there on a, on a daily basis already.
Okay. Okay.
I guess, I mean, the main thing with the easement is traffic is the concern and I don't know, is there a way?
It's certainly going to be way less traffic than what I'm having for my trainer days, my friends. Um, that's probably three or four trainers that are coming up with three or four of their dogs. Um. And so that.
You won't do that anymore?
Um, I will, I will still do that. That's not part of my business, but that will continue.
But it adds to the traffic, it's like.
Yeah, so it's, it will be way less than that. The, the, like, the individual trainings would be like somebody coming with their dog, we do a lesson and then not be like one a day.
Oh, and it's back, again, back to the, back to the boarding thing, because I mean, a lot of times a trainer will take a dog for a period of time. I mean, is it, is, are we, any of the conditions, well, we'll get to that, but I mean, that's, um, that constitute boarding?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The dog is there for training and the training is multiple days. Is that considered boarding?
Yes, I would say so. So as your question, uh, boarding, again, uh, section three oh one of the land development regulations, if not otherwise, if not defined there and you have to use the ordinary customary dictionary definition, uh, and, and board is to provide with regular meals and often also lodging, usually for compensation. Emphasize usually for compensation because I'm, I'm not saying if it's a, a completely pro bono issue that, that we would not have an issue with zoning, let's put it that way.
But that would restrict her to keeping the dog multiple days.
Yes.
Training for, I mean, that does happen, right, with dog training?
It can go either way. Some people do day training, so they bring the, the dog in the morning and pick it up after work. Um, that would be a lot more traffic. Or somebody could bring me a, a dog for the week. And they're in that, in my home with me, with my dogs, and that would be less traffic, but technically it would be considered boarding, right? Nights.
It would be considered boarding.
Is it, is it still boarding if it's in my house?
That's why I'm, I'm the expert.
Yes, whether it's accessory buildings or, or it would be considered.
That puts a restriction on you that right now I'm hearing that it's something you would rather not have.
But I would rather not have it.
You're not going to keep a dog multiple days.
I can do day training where people bring their dogs to me and they'll pick them up.
That's if the boarding was prohibited. That's if we.
There'll be more traffic on the easement.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
All right, um. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Chris, are there, uh?
Uh, yes.
People like to speak.
Elizabeth O'Byrne King.
Hi, um, I'm the neighbor in question and I wrote a letter. There have been two other letters written to the best of my knowledge about this. And while I support Cassandra's desire to train dogs, I have a problem with the location of the school and the activities. And I urge the planning commission to deny her application because it is unclear what she wants to do. She stood up here and she couldn't say, is she boarding? Is she not boarding? Is she having doggy daycare? What exactly is she doing? The fence between our property line, she relies on that one hundred percent for all but one of her pens. And that fence is not electrified. It is not extra reinforced or anything else. I used to do doggy daycare over at Wellspring Farm, which is also in Fairfield, and they had a much better system for containment of the dogs and double fencing and all sorts of other things. I just think that she wants to do this and she doesn't have a business license. She doesn't have anything but a fictitious name as far as her business structure. She has, to the best of my knowledge, no commercial insurance or liability or anything else. And for those reasons, I think that she needs to take a step back and she needs to figure out exactly what the business plan is, exactly what she wants to do, and then she can come back and reapply. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that is everyone that signed up, but we'll recognize anyone else in the, in the audience at this time. Uh, not seeing anyone, let me check on Zoom. Uh, if you are on Zoom and would like to make a, a public comment on the Harding application, please utilize raise your hand now. Not seeing any, I'll turn it back over to the, uh, the floor, back over to the chair.
Uh, with no further comments, I would like to recognize that the commission received written comments from Ms. Anita Adamski, Mr. Thomas Kalaski, and Ms. Elizabeth O'Byrne. Are there any objections to closing the public hearing or would the commission like to continue the public hearing to the next planning commission meeting, May fourteenth, seven P M? Um. Gentlemen, do we have enough information as far as, uh, uh, the boarding issue is definitely an issue?
Yeah, I think it's a big issue because there are a lot of training dogs that go away for, you know, it's like summer camp for a week. And they spend the night with the trainers and everything. Whatever.
And, and to be clear, I think it can, I, I think it can be as a zoning administrator, I think it could be worded properly where boarding is permitted, but solely for training, the, the training of dogs. Uh, the dogs that are clients for training because I, I emphasize that. Uh, because we have schools and, and in some cases, in one, one particular case, we had a boarding school. Uh, in, in most cases, there's no boarding associated with the, with the school, but the boarding would have to be associated with the school and could not be an independent endeavor as far as, as far as doggy daycare, as far as just, just, hey, here's my number, I'm boarding dogs.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
It, we still have the question of opening or, or closing the, I'm sorry, continuing or closing the public.
Okay, let's see. Um, no further comments. We're going to close the public hearing. Discussion, gentlemen, amongst ourselves here.
Warmer go through the. Conditions and we can take into.
Go through the conditions.
Yeah, see.
Chris now has the time to go through this.
To address the the one comment there is by putting conditions on it, you're restricting your your help, you're. Boxing that plan in a little bit in terms of.
Boxer playing in.
Well, I'm just saying this, the the comment that it could expand by putting conditions on, we could probably do some control of that, but. I'm not sure that these do, I mean, like timing.
I mean.
Right now, five.
Of dogs. There seem to be, are we going to try to figure that out right now? Should we? Work with this. Late in the evening.
Be fine with that.
Unless you guys want to try to hammer it down.
But what's the two saying possibly set it over to.
Possibly set it over because I don't think there's clarity in conditions. Unless we could establish those conditions.
What condition do we have up in there? Well. What I'm looking at is the proposed, you know, if we decide to make a motion here. There's about seven different items on there that we'd have to clarify.
I don't do, I mean, we have to. Number one is no clarification needed. Number two, we put in some times.
So so the I guess a question for the applicant, what's the the group training? What what is that versus? Just means three or more.
Training is only if there's actual interest. I have not had any calls for that yet. My building really can't handle more than four dogs for a group pass.
Okay.
So with that being said, you could certainly strike number three.
Strike, yeah.
Would that affect what you what your ultimate goal is if we struck the the ability to do group training, I guess? What would it be like, say, an individual has three dogs they own versus three individuals with one dog each? Is that kind of what we're getting at or?
If I'm correct, if you strike number three, then you'd be removing limitations on group training. It wouldn't necessarily.
Could you say group training is not permitted?
Yeah, you'd have to put something saying group training is not permitted. If you just strike it, just means that she could do however she felt was appropriate within the.
Say again, John.
If you just strike number three, group training would not be prohibited and there would not and it would not be limited beyond what other limitations might apply in general.
So what he was saying is like to say group training shall be forbidden.
Or you could put numbers in there too, if you always want to fill in the blanks with whatever.
Okay.
Whatever would work.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, what is our, I mean, a problem with group training, as long as it's timed and and when the, what is it, certain times, a few times a month?
So the timing would be fine still, nine A M. to five P M.
That's my window, right?
How many times per month did we?
A group last lessons are typically once a week.
Four times per month.
Uh huh.
Hey, I just I just thought of something. I visited the site today and. This would be a pain in the butt, but the the gate situation is is pretty bad. Yesterday I came and I had to back down to Elizabeth's property. Can the gate be pulled all the way forward? I hate to have you do new gate work, but somewhere that you could turn around at the top, pull the gate all the way up to the top.
Proposed that with Liz and her husband, but we all opted that they wanted the gravel down where we have it, but if if we need to.
The the public hearings.
Public hearings.
I'm not talking about the gate.
Yeah, we can't have.
The the public hearing is closed. It's okay. We're allowed to ask Cassandra.
Well, you can ask anybody, but yeah, that shouldn't be.
Okay.
But I think I've identified a place if we need to get rid of that gate where.
You follow me, you follow me so somebody could turn around at the top instead of backing down to, yeah, yeah. So I guess that we could add that to to eight, Chris, and just an adequate turnaround area at the top of her property.
Just working on it. Do we want to go back to number three and the number of dogs in the group? Three, four? What's uh, what's in?
She said at max capacity, she could have four.
Four dogs in the building at one time, but we we can have other people with dogs out in their cars and they do a shuffle. Yeah.
All right.
So, yeah.
So we'll put down four then, okay? Four at one time, though, it's saying.
So the one we're working with is number two still correct? I thought we were on three. Uh, I'm sorry, at number number four, I'm sorry, starting if we go in order, just if I have it correctly.
Yep.
Uh, number two, individual training activities limited from nine A M. to five P M. And then I have days of the week. Is that is that? Is we we can change that to the number of times a week.
Do you have a feeling for that?
Times would be better than days of week.
How many how many times a week, number of times?
Uh, just for the business, not for the sports. Let's say three.
All individual training activities shall be conducted within the existing building. Individual training activities are limited to four. Dogs on the property at one time excluding the landowner's dogs. And how many dogs do you have?
Is it on the property or loose?
It would be on the property.
Okay, so only four dogs can be on the in in addition to mine?
Yes.
Excluding yours. It's with excluding yours.
And then number four, group training shall be limited to nine to five as well. That one, do I have that correct? Uh, and in this one, in this case, I have times per month. That three. I thought we said four.
Four, four, said four times.
Four times a month. Group training activities are limited to blank.
Four dogs.
Four dogs. At the property at one time excluding the landowner's dogs. So those numbers would be the same, four and four. Uh, training and the number three, training is is training. Dogs is limited to general obedience and or training of service dog classes. No steady to shot training shall be allowed.
No shock. Is that what you just said?
Uh, steady to shot.
That's a bird dog.
It is a bird.
Training technique.
No, I don't know anything about that.
Uh, number five, boarding operations shall be limited to customers of the school.
Writing this down, dude. Okay.
Private of private school, yes. And so should do we? Do we want to further clarify that as far as that that would be limited to three days a week is why we where we currently have it drafted? Because the individual training facilities limited to. Individual day training activities. Three times a week. Uh, I'm gonna change number two to individual day training activities is limited to nine to five. Uh, P nine A M. to five P M. Three days a week. Uh, all individual training activities shall be concluded with conducted within the existing building. Individual training activities are limited to four dogs on the property at one time excluding the landowner's dogs. Then you get into boarding operations. It says boarding operations shall be limited to customers of the school, private school, excuse me. Uh, so then that would have to, that would, as it reads now, that would be limited to three consecutive nights essentially, or three days. With with how it is at number two. Number.
Really. Three consecutive days. Does that make more sense than saying the dog leaves one day and then comes back the next?
Yeah, what I'm finding is that people want their dogs on the weekends when they're home from work. So they kind of like me to take the dogs Monday through Friday. They drop off Monday morning, they pick up Friday after they're done, so it's really four back to back.
I'm from.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to look at this because we have and Mr. Dryden might need some assistance there. Does he have a copy of this? Get you a copy of this. You got it. Yes, sir. Uh. Boarding operations shall be limited to customers of the school. And. No more. Than. Five consecutive nights.
Per and at five consecutive nights per animal, we're dealing with the individual animals, right?
Yes.
Five consecutive nights during the time or we've been, we probably want to limit to the training period during the during the period of training.
So some. To add that language.
Yeah, I think I think so. Just to clarify that it's there, they're not, you know, it could be dogs at the school that might be spending, not just spend night, they're not there, they're there for the allowed to board during the period of training, not for other times.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we're okay with number two, if we have, if we add individual day training activities is limited to nine to five, three days a week. All individual activities shall be concluded in existing building. Individual training activities limited to four dogs and that that's, I I think that would be clarification enough that that. Number two would pertain to individual day training activities and number five would pertain to boarding.
Yeah, and do it in the boarding, though, would not apply to number three with it. Do we need to make that clear? It's not applying to group training. It's only applying to the day training animals. Which is a little bit of a misnomer. Normally you don't say day train if you're talking about boarding, but it's, I suppose that.
Private school.
And not to speak for the commission, but I assume that's what's meant. It's not the boarding isn't applied to the group training sessions, but to the individual training.
Yeah. Going back to the the disc, that's done outside, so the way it's written, you wouldn't be allowed to do that, correct? Because it says all training activities shall be conducted within the existing building or do you do that inside the building as well?
No, that's the one we can't do inside the building, but if we need to scrap that and do it at one of my other trainers. Facilities, that's fine.
I think that would help with the fencing stuff and the neighbors would probably be really happy to see that one disappear. Yeah, yeah, but, yeah. Okay, Chris, and you continue to go down there. Are you? You down to six?
Uh, compliance with section thirteen oh three, general lighting requirements and section thirteen oh three dash oh four, general design requirements of the county of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. I I do have in there, the special exception permit shall be valid for X years, if that's something the planning commission is interested in.
What do you guys think? Which tip, was there a customary?
It's really not because state law was modified last year to to provide for a period of validity. So it's not, it's not something that we're we're used to doing because state law, in my opinion, was clarified last year, but but. We don't, we don't have.
So she would have to reapply?
Yes, sir.
Go through this process again?
Yes, sir, the whole process.
If you adopt, I mean, this this isn't required to be adopted, but it's um, as far as a going forward practice, I think it's something we should consider. Uh, you you aren't required to put a limitation in here, however, it's as a part as as a going as a going forward practice, I think that's probably why Chris is including this language as some that would be considered with special exceptions.
It also obviously, in my opinion, has the has the um. Uh, a whole lot to do with the investment. This is an existing building, you know, it could be extremely problematic for other projects as far as the investment and and has been problematic in in the past.
I'm I'm with you. Okay, so you could eliminate that or what do you what do you guys think? It would be a long period of time. Five years, ten years, no, scratch the whole thing?
I'm gonna say scratch it.
Scratch it, Brad.
Eliminate number seven, Chris. I have no problem with that. And then the the new number seven, since seven was scratched. Can you put a a a gate modification so at the top of the property?
As I said, relocation of the existing gate to provide adequate turnaround on the Harding property.
Excellent. Okay.
And the last thing that has been brought up that is not addressed is the parking associated with the group training. Uh, it is fairly limited with with four dogs. Don't know you, and Ms. Harding may speak to this as far as adequate parking. Obviously, it does have a lot of. Grass associated, seven acres mostly open.
Say again, Chris, I'm sorry, I was.
Uh, one thing is brought up, I believe, is not necessarily.
Oh, the parking?
The parking, yes.
I was up there, you can make it work as long as you can turn around.
Once you're on the property and not impeded by the gate.
Correct. Don't you think that is because, correct?
And for larger crowds, we can open up onto the hayfield too.
Yeah. I think it's parking should not be an issue up there. All right, Jim, go ahead.
Chris, on seven, you said relocation of the existing gate at the top of the property, is that what you said? I I just said existing gates, only gate shown on the plan. It says relocation of the existing gate to provide for an adequate turnaround on the Harding property.
Okay, Chris, you good for men? Are any any commission members like to make additional comments or discussion? Would any commission member like to make a motion at this time?
Associated with the boarding.
This is eight, we can't, we can't speak out there in the middle of the meeting, that's not in order. You'd speak to.
I haven't got, all right, so on five, what do we say on?
Five.
The limited boarding operation should be limited to the customers of the private school and no more than five consecutive nights?
Yeah.
Is that was all that Chris had added? Uh, during during the period, it's, I'm sorry, boarding operations shall be limited to the customers of the school.
Four consecutive nights.
Uh, to the private school, excuse me, and no more than five consecutive nights. During the train, uh, go aboard in five consecutive nights. The, and I have something here.
During the period.
During the period of training. Limited to individual day activities. Hopefully I got all that.
Adam, you think you got it?
I I do believe so.
Would any commission member like to make?
Further discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public here, well. Can we carry this over, not public here? I'll carry this over to the next meeting. I I think we need to see those written out.
I don't have a problem with that.
Don't wait up, let me do it right. I make I make a motion to set this matter over to the next meeting of the planning commission on May fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, we have a motion to set the meeting forward. Do I have a second? I do not have a second, so the motion dies. Do I have another motion?
I make a motion to recommend to the board supervisors at the application for the special exception permit to develop and operate a dog training facility, private school in agricultural and general use district A two. Zoning district be approved with the following conditions. Substantial compliance with the systematic plan titled tax map thirty nine dash A dash three A on seven point oh seven acres per tax record showing the existing buildings and fences. Two individual day training activities limited from.
Two individual day training activities limited from nine AM to five PM, three times a week. All training, all individual training activities shall be conducted with the existing, within the existing building. Individual training activities are limited to four dogs on the property at one time excluding the landowners' dogs. Group training shall be limited from nine to five, four times a month. Group training activities are limited to four dogs on the property at one time excluding the landowners' dogs. Training dogs. Training dogs is limited to general obedience and or training of service dog classes, no steady to shot training shall be allowed. Boarding operations shall be limited to customers of the private school and no more than five consecutive nights during the period limited to day activities. Uh, compliance with the section thirteen oh three dash oh three general lighting requirements and section thirteen oh three dash zero four general design requirements of the county of Rockbridge land development regulations. And the relocation of the existing gate to provide adequate turnaround on the Harding property. Did I get them all?
Get them all, Chris. I think he did. We have a motion on the floor by Adam Sandridge. Do we have a second?
Second.
Bob Kramer seconds the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No. Nay.
Nay. Okay, we have, uh, those in favor were Sandridge, Kramer, BB and Whitmore. Uh, the opposed were Sabrezy. Uh, motion carries with a four to one vote. That concludes that here. Okay, we are now moving on to the number eight bark electric cooperative continued public hearing from the March twelfth, twenty twenty five planning commission meeting. Application to amend conditions associated with a pre- previously approved special exception permit for a public utility in the agricultural and general uses. A two zoning districts will now have staff and applicant presentations. Uh, yes, uh, B A R C Electric Cooperative P O Box, uh, uh, two forty six Millboro, Virginia, two four four six zero. Has made an application to amend conditions associated with a previously approved special exception permit for a public utility. Uh, in the agricultural and general use district, A two zoning district properties identified as nineteen seventy two Big Spring Drive Lexington, Virginia, two four four five zero. As further identified as tax map number, and I'll, I'll get the GIS up here in a second. Uh, forty dash A dash fifty consisting of fifteen point two four acres per tax records. Uh, on, um, I will skip the, some of the history here, uh, that's included in your agenda item. Uh, but would like to say, uh, on March twelfth, twenty twenty five, the planning commission opened and continued its public hearing to the April ninth, twenty twenty five planning commission meeting. Uh, concerns expressed during the May twelfth, twenty, uh, March twelfth, twenty twenty five public hearing, including that the originally approved temporary special exception. Uh, yard was turning into a permanent use with warehouses. Uh, the use in the A two zoning district, the impacts on the, uh, existing farms adjacent to the cars, adjacent to the land and in the Cars Creek Valley. Lack of vegetative screening, view shed concerns, conflicts, uh, for the expansion of the use with a recorded easement through a neighbor property and aesthetics of the proposed building. Uh, and follow up, uh, to these questions and concerns, Bark has submitted the revised schematic plan. Uh, proposed building elevations and a narrative providing updates to the January seventeenth, twenty twenty five Bark a letter. Uh, responding to questions and comments from public, uh, and put planning mission during the March twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting. Um, just like other applications, we have some, uh, draft conditions that could be utilized, uh, and recommended for approval. Of the special application, unlike the other applications we've seen this evening, these draft conditions were included on, in your agenda package, uh, that was posted. Uh, with that being said, I'd like to turn the floor over to, uh, first Mr. Bill Buchanan, uh, CEO of B A R C Electrical Cooperative. And I can pull the plans up as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Chris. Um, yeah, as we said, we, we, uh, of course we're here last month and, um, we, we did a little bit more work. One of the things I wanted to, to, uh, I guess, talk about a little bit is just. The, the importance to us of the lay down yard and, and for our members to, to, uh, as far as having materials available and readily available, uh, during outages during. Uh, right now with our, our fiber construction, we have, uh, two grants, one of them I'm a little concerned about the USDA grant, but that's, uh. But of the two grants that we have right now, we're a little over five hundred members that we're trying to build, build fiber to. Um, the, the goal of having a permanent lay down yard is to continue serving our, our members on, on this side of the mountain. Um, and we have, uh, uh, you know, we've, we've, we've made a, a pretty substantial investment in the building. We, we think that, um, the, the vegetation, uh, the, the, the plan that we proposed, um, you, we did get. We, uh, one thing I would say is I, I did take the time to go out and look, um, you know, a different perspective. Uh, and I've, I've mentioned this to, to one of the neighbors that. When you sit in down where we're at, kind of in the, in the, in the bowl, I guess, and you, and you look up. At, at some of the, the homes that are, that are looking down in there, it's, it's, uh, uh, you know, you don't really know the problem. But if you get up on the hill and you look down, then you do see that, you do see that it's really, really critical that that lay down yard is, is. Is kept neat and, and organized and clean. And part of the reason for a building is, is to put material inside so it's out of sight. So that was one of the, one of the things that we talked about was the buildings and getting things undercover against. It's good for the material, good for the equipment and, and really, I think. I think a, a good, a good way to, 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 uh, change the dynamic of that lay down yard a little bit, not be quite so visible. Um, what we submitted, uh, Chris Botjulinski, our COO here, he, he got on and these, that what we submitted were just some. Ideas of what a building would look like if you took something and instead of making it, um. A warehouse, uh, industrial looking warehouse, you know, concrete, uh, uh. Coated kind of a building. More of a, more of a barn look that's a, that's a truly an ag, ag looking building on the property. Um, that's what, what we would propose. What we, what we, what we showed you is just an idea, certainly not the way that would necessarily have to be there. There would be that we know, we realize there would have to be the, uh, the, um. Tourism, uh, corridor, um, rules would have to fall in the, in the color schemes and that I think the, probably the design, all that would have to be approved. But we, you know, our goal as Bark Electric is to be, you know, these are our members that are, that are, uh. They're behind me here, some of them probably speak against it, but they are our members, but they're our neighbors and we wanna, you know, we wanna do. We want to make sure that we, we are making this aesthetically pleasing to them. And so that's something I think that's going to require, you know, when we get into that, that part of that, it's, it's a ways down the road. I think it would be something that we would have to have a, you know, a, a, a really good opportunity to meet with them and talk about that. So. I, as far as, um. You know, the grants, I, I think that one of the conditions that was in there that I do, I struggle with a little bit is the, is the, the solar field issue and. You know, we're, again, being a co-op, we're owned, we're owned by our members and it, when there's. And I can, I can appreciate the whole idea with the solar fields and, you know, if, if a developer out of New York or out of Canada is coming in and, and. In making an investment of building a solar field, a commercial scale solar field in a, in a, you know, on a farm and somebody's area, somebody's field or whatever. That those things trade, trade hands four and five times through their life cycle and then. And then now somebody's left with, you know, when that thing is, is ready to be retired, somebody's left with. Something to clean up. So there has to be the rules and I understand that. This particular solar field, I just really want to emphasize to the, to, you know, to the, to the, the, uh, commission here that. It's, it's owned by the members and they, they buy so our members that can't either can't economically, they, that solar doesn't make sense for them to put on their own homes. They don't have maybe the right, they're not sitting at the right angle to get good solar production. The whole idea of that, of community solar and it, and it was the first one in the state of Virginia. It, the whole idea of community solar is it allowed people to buy blocks. So when you think of, when you think of commercial scale solar and you think of these, you know, investor, investor owned, um, uh. Projects that, that, that come in, I, I a hundred percent agree with, with the, the state statute is that the, the waiting to be but for us. It's just going to add cost to the membership to, to, to have to put bonds and, and all of these engineering designs in place. So, um. And that's, you know, that's a, that's a lot of, a lot of people out there and, and it's. Our, our, our facility is owned by our members. That solar field is owned by our members, the whole property is owned by our members and anything we do. Adding costs that just, it just, it just becomes part of rate, a rate case in the future. So I, I. I would like you to please consider maybe not, not pushing those, those, uh, solar rules on there. But that's, that's one of the concerns I had otherwise. I, I, I feel like, um. The, 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 the way we put the, the application, I think the use, I think the vegetation, the vegetative screening, I think it's all. All really good, a good plan. And I think as we get, go forward, um, if it's approved as we go forward, you know, we've, we've got some, some. Some other hurdles to go to jump, but, um, again, we're, we're willing to work with our, our community to do that.
Before opening the public hearing, it's, this would be a great time to. Talk to the applicant and the staff with all of our questions.
I got plenty, so someone go first this time.
Tony, jump in, man. Go for it.
Thank you. One of the things I would, in, in this, this part of the discussion, I want to get clear, I mean. A denial of your request brings us back to two thousand sixteen and, um. I guess the first que, and, and well, the first question I have is that you've made changes. Since the last time, and I know some of them, I think were in response to the comments that I may have made. Um, can you go over those changes that you, that you've done?
In turn, and since the last time that we, last month, you mean as far as changes to the, to the plan, um. One, one of the cha, I mean, I think that most of the changes that we, we submitted were, were the, the vegetative changes. We did take away, I think our original plan, we had a, a road that went. Up the hill, I, I don't have a real.
I can, I can act, maybe, maybe I can feel a little bit better because I did, uh, mark some of the differences and maybe you can comment on.
Okay.
Um. There were on the, on the tooth, actually no, that's not what I wanted to, go ahead, finish what you were saying.
So there, there was a road going that we had going from the lay down yard, can I use a pointer, Chris? Going from the lay down yard down here that we had originally had coming up here and looping around on this, this upside of the property up here. Where originally we had put in a, the, the idea of a, of a, of a fueling island and that. That was a, that was kind of a, a wish list item and it's, it's certainly not necessary for what we're doing. So we took that out. Uh, we took out the road, we, we, we put a lot more vegetative, uh, screening in this, this area here. I'm sort of, that keeps popping up. I don't know how to keep it from doing that, but, uh, and then. Um, I, I can't remember was, did we have this all here before?
I was thinking I could, it was a PowerPoint that could make it a printer. So, so this, if I recall correctly, this was changed from, uh, ship, uh, Laurel to, uh.
Giant green or Leland.
Leland type or giant green.
Green Arbor Vines.
Uh, this section here was added since the last plan. Uh, since the, since the March planning mission, I should say. Again, Mr. Buchanan reviewed that the, the road going up to this, uh, what once was going to be a fuel island is no longer there. Um, uh, they have made some, uh, modifications to this area. If you may recall, this was a much larger gravel area here. And so they're actually not, not proposing a larger gravel area there and actually are reducing the gravel area here. Uh, they've now shown ingress and egress to the, to the proposed, uh, warehouse and, and, uh, shop for light maintenance. Um, these, if I recall correctly, were proposed, uh, and. They are now, uh, not proposed, but they, I, I'm sorry, these were proposed as the existing emerald green. Uh, are, are, are fading or are dying, that they would be, uh, replanted with green giants. This is actually shows a, a separate row of, of green giants there. Um, and I think, I think that is a good summary.
Yeah, and the only, the other thing that you, you might, uh. Be one or other was in the narrative I mentioned, one of the concerns was lighting and, you know, at night. Um, right now, all of our, our lighting out here is whether it's down in the lay down yard or up at the office is all like a dusk to dawn. So. Um, again, in the case of, of one of our neighbors, it's, you know, they're, they're trying to create and then, uh, uh, uh. You know, uh, uh, an area where there, there isn't a lot of light pollution. So we, we looked at that and it's not a problem for us to take that to a motion sensor lighting and, and, you know, the times where we would have to have lighting on is during storms and guys are trying to get. Poles loaded up or material loaded up, but other than that, uh, you know, motion sensor lighting would do that as opposed to a dusted on. And that, and the lighting, the height of the lighting could probably even come down a little bit on that.
Um, there was a comment earlier, um, I don't know if you, I guess you all were here at the very beginning about, uh, the current lighting right now.
Hmm.
Um, can you comment on, 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 on that?
Associated with the current lay down yard, if I recall right.
Right. Now, some of those lighting, I think is at the, the, the collection center as well, but.
There, there is, there's lighting at the collection center, which obviously that's not, you know, something that we can control, but, but the lighting that's in our lay down yard can easily be, it can, it can easily be a motion sensor based instead of a dusted on.
So you have like, how many lights going on right now?
Is, sir, sit three in the lay down and three up above, is that, I think six.
So there'll probably be more lights in the revised thing, but, but less.
Probably, probably, I mean, there might be, you know, again, I don't think there would be more, more lighting. We don't, we don't require a lot of lighting in the night, it's pretty quiet place unless there's a, a, you know, a major disaster going on, then we, then we have a lot of people in there. But otherwise it's, there's not a lot of activity.
For your, the security of some of that, some of that may be valuable and the darker it is, the easier it is to, um, create mischief or whatever in the, in the yard.
I don't. One of the things we do have on the, on this, the old school houses, we, you know, the, the, when we remodel that we put in a glass. Roof in the vestibular area and, and if the lights don't get turned off, that can definitely. Throw a lot of up lighting up into the sky. So we need to make, you know, we'll have to make sure those are, those are also controlled.
Can you pull up the, that picture of the, what it could look like? Now you seem to like one waffle a little bit on.
I'm not waffling on, I just don't know what it would look like without getting everybody involved. It's, it's a, it's. It, it, there's a, there would be a lot that would go into designing a, a facility that would work. I, it's, this was just to take an example of an ag. Style building and saying, if you put something like that in there and the color scheme was, was right for that, that area. Um. It wouldn't look like a, you know, a Walmart distribution center. It would, it would, it would look like something that you'd find on any farm that you drove by.
The kind of things that are in the lay down yard right now, um, I, I'm going to give you.
Yep.
What I think they, I mean, you've got poles.
Both.
Electric poles.
Yep.
Uh, you've got those cement boxes that you, the junction boxes, whatever.
Handholds, yep.
There's fiber optic cable. There's fiber optic cables, big things of orange.
Correct, uh, that interduct, the orange is an interduct, yep.
You have some electrical. Non cable, non fiber.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have conductor, yeah.
And you got transformers.
Transformers.
Anything that I'm missing that's there right now?
Some equipment, there's some equipment down there. We have, if every once in a while it's good steer down there, a mini excavator. Um, there's a, a. There's a couple of trucks down there right now, but they were sold at auction. So we're just waiting for those to get picked up, but. Couple trailers, there's a, there's a uh. Our, there's a big dumpster down there. Um, and then there's a Conex building down there to store material in.
So of those things, um, I mean, obviously the poles are going to stay outside. You're not going, you wouldn't put them in. What kind of things would go into link to, what would go into the?
Cable and transformers and conduit, things like that would go in inside that, inside the building, be undercover.
What, and vehicles?
Vehicles would go into, yeah.
What's the height of the building? Twenty nine?
Twenty nine? Twenty six in the cupola as well, yeah, I think three, twenty nine.
Chris, I might need some help on some of these here because um, what, what I'm, what I want to kind of drive it, do now is that if we. Were to deny this, it goes back to the two thousand sixteen and I want to try to get. At least for a lot of the people that may be commenting here later is that realize what. A denial really is. It's not, you know, we're not taking a solar, solar field down, you're not moving out of your offices, you're not the. Um, but so, I mean, some of that thing is, uh, I'd like to, to delve into that because I have some things that I've, I've noted. That could happen, like you mentioned the fuel island, islands already. Um, there was fuel islands. On, in fact, on your plan you brought last month, had a moving of the fuel island, I think from behind the building, your, your office building. To down below. So there's no fuel islands.
No, we don't, we, and we don't have a fuel island today there. It's, it, it was, we were proposing putting one up on top of the hill.
Two thousand sixteen, the fuel island is back behind the.
Yeah, that one's, it's been gone since I've been here. It's not been, it's not been.
There was one there at one time or is it on the plan?
Probably when they first did it, I, I think there was a tank, fuel tank back there.
Um, you mentioned already that, the, um, I mean, right now your truck, the trucks, I noticed that there's trucks in the yard. And there's also some trucks occasionally up behind.
If the, they usually put the trucks up behind it, the, if the trucks have, if they're getting ready for a job for the next day and they've got poles loaded up, they do not take the. Poles up behind the building with the, on the trucks. They leave them down in the full yard, yeah.
But normally you would park them up?
Correct.
Is that still the same way in the current, the, 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 your new plan?
It is, it is. I, we, we've moved some employee parking down in this area right here. Is just so the lineman, the, the, there would be trucks because they would be in the warehouse undercover. They would. They would park down here and get their, get their trucks out.
But I thought the, the overflow employee parking was now.
Not really overflow, it's just where our lineman would park down here. This is the, this is the employee parking.
That's in the way there is, they're, they're parking up there as well.
Just, just, this is the parking, right? This is our employee parking right here. And then we do put, this is where you're, I think you're talking about where the trucks stay, they stay back here. Oh, sorry.
All nights for the mouse not to be working.
Okay, so this is the area up behind the. Up behind the, the, the office that's where we park, you know, the line trucks and.
I mean, right now it's marked as uh. Employee overflow parking.
I think that's up, up on top. I think that's up here where, where we were gonna, I mean, where originally that road was going to go around and that's. The, the fuel island was going to be up there. But in this.
I guess you've got. Wedding venue and, you know, that entrance runs right there along that fence and. What kind of things are going to happen behind the building there between the building and the other property? On the two thousand sixteen, it's a lay down yard also, at least the way I read the thing.
And I think, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it is a lay down yard currently. You're looking at two different areas. Uh, this one here is a, is an existing fenced off area. Uh, that's directly behind the school and then you have your, your upper parking lot that I think you're referring to.
Right.
Up here.
What kind of things are going to be put there?
So that, that, because that is a, that is a, a area where there's some big tall pines there that are, they're starting to, I mean, some of them are probably. Still healthy, but some are starting to look pretty bad. So this needs to be, we need to have some more, uh, some of this taken out and some more vegetation put in there.
But as far as what will, what is proposed for the upper.
Because on the two fifth, six, two thousand sixteen, there's an area up there that's called lay down yard.
So that, that area is here. If you're looking at the two thousand sixteen plan, the material lay down yard is located in this area here where it is currently being utilized. As a material lay down yard, we are talking about the upper parking lot. Does that make sense?
Right. Yeah, I. Just, just trying to get some of that stuff clear because that's, I mean, if two thousand sixteen, if we go back, if we deny and go back to two thousand sixteen. That's the extent of your lay down area.
Yeah, yeah, that wouldn't, that would not, that would not work for, for a lay down yard. It wouldn't, there wouldn't be enough. Number one, from that, oh, from where it says overflow parking there down to the fenced in area, that's a, that's a pretty good. That's a pretty good elevation change in that. Um, so, so that's pretty unusable. Uh, and you just have that pretty much that overflow parking area, which, which wouldn't, it wouldn't really be enough material for what we need over here.
And to be clear, the, the planning commission would be recommending denial to the board of supervisors.
Right, I'm sorry, yes.
Tony, I'm sorry.
That's right, no.
Chris, can you clarify when he says go back to two thousand sixteen? If this, if the board denies this, this application. What, where does everybody stand? B A R C and. Uh, where does B A R C and what do you guys do?
I mean, go, go ahead, Chris.
I can, I can tell you what the two thousand sixteen plan shows. Uh, it shows and it's in the package. Uh, we did our best to, to modify the colors, but it shows solar uh in the existing fenced off area. Uh, it shows a material lay down yard in the rear. Um, it shows a community field. With some parking associated where our actual physical collection center is now. Uh, and that has been, that has been some. Uh, there obviously has been a fair amount of discussion rightfully so on the community field and that, that was in. In conjunction, in my opinion, in two thousand sixteen with, with both Bark and uh Rockbridge County. Since that time. It was de- deemed for multiple reasons not to be feasible there. At the same time, a- as this discussion was going on or similar timeframe, I should say. Uh, we were, we were in negotiations with the Virginia Horse Center that, that came to fruition for a, I think it was a fifty year lease to. To provide two community fields, what, which at the time, uh, the administrative board supervisors, if you will, felt it was more. Uh, conducive to community fields because the, the proximity to the, to the center of the county, if you will. And so for, for multiple reasons, the community field did not come to fruition. Uh, and of course, where the parking is shown now is a. I think it's a point three nine, uh, zero point three nine acre lease from Bark itself. A lot of the facilities are on the V dot right of way. Of the collection center, but all the physical improvements such as the compactor, the uh employee shed, that type of thing. They are all on a leased property from Bark. I believe it's a, can't remember the exact year timeframe of that lease.
I'm sorry.
Four tenths of an acre.
And Commissioner Sabrezy, I think the point you're making is that if, uh, if, if for some reason this application for the special exception doesn't pass. The two thousand sixteen would still remain, the, all the rights that they have currently would remain, they wouldn't, it wouldn't change.
That's, that's the point. I'm trying to figure out what those things are.
They already are using this property.
We have what was presented last month as a new, we have what's presented this month, which is different than last month. And then if there was a denial by the board of supervisors, it would go back to two thousand sixteen.
They, they would, they would, um, their rights and under two thousand sixteen still exist. This wouldn't, it wouldn't extinguish their rights. We just, with the changes they're asking for.
No, I mean, and, and.
But that does have the lay down yard be on two thousand sixteen behind the old school, shows lay down yard there.
Uh, Chris mentioned the, um, the community field and has been mentioned by several people that I've talked to and letters that we have as well. The community field, as it's shown on this. Property right now, I mean, on the two thousand sixteen thing is, is, and, and Chris, you, this is really for both of you in terms of. That's not feasible that, at this point, is that correct?
Uh, where, again, where the parking is, is where the collections that are currently is.
So, I mean, for some reason, all these years that this was done, that there was never any pursue from the county or, or. Or from Bark to make that.
The reason that is, is because as you, as, as reported in the agenda item, in two thousand seventeen, they were granted a temporary special exception permit. In two thousand nineteen, that extent, there was an extension of the two thousand seventeen permit. In twenty twenty one, there was a new special exception permit issued and twenty three, the uh, that. In twenty three, the, the special exception permit was extended until, I believe the date is April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
But none of those extensions changed anything as far as the, that area where the field is. I'm just. I'm just curious on why the county never pursued it.
Uh, that was because it was essentially during, again, during that same timeframe, we were in negotiations with the Virginia Horse Center and we successfully obtained. I think it's a fifty year lease uh for, for, I can't remember how many acres, but it provided for two ball fields. They have not come to fruition either. But provided for two playing fields and uh, the, the board of supervisors administration, if you will. Uh, thought that that was more conducive to the county as a whole because it was closer to the center of.
So what, I guess what I'm trying to get at is if we, if the board of supervisors deny, that field will never. Come to fruition.
Uh, not. That is shown on there. The parking is not.
Well, could it be smaller or, 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 I mean, is that?
As far as a smaller soccer field.
I'm just saying, is it, tell me what the odds are. I'm trying to figure out what happens if.
That's a, essentially board supervisors, county administration board supervisors would be better addressed to answer that question. They could go to the park. I, I'm uncertain.
There's, I mean, there was no commitment on Bark's part to actually invest in that fi- field.
Other than the, I have to go back and look, but other than showing it on a site plan, I do not believe there's any contractual agreement to bring the county in.
Okay, um, another change, um, if we went back to two thousand sixteen, the fencing as it occurs right now, doesn't change.
Uh, that's correct. Yes, that is correct.
So the area that's the lay down yard is still within the fence?
Yes.
What kind of uses could they?
Uh, it's, uh, it would be for extension of the existing solar field.
Okay, so they could extend the full solar field.
As shown on the two thousand sixteen plan, yes, sir.
What other, I mean, if they don't extend the full solar field, what kind of things could they do?
Uh, they, that, that would be limited. Per the special exception, I should say. Yeah, I, I did hear a comment that they would have the, um. The, the permitted uses would still be there, but as a used by special exception, they would be uh limited to the, what is shown on the two thousand sixteen plan.
There's no entrance off Big Spring after with the, 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 the new plan. Everything is going to go in and out.
The, the office entrance would still stay, the, the, the entrance into the, into the lay down yard would, would. Would be, would be gone.
Yes, that, that's correct. That would be gone because it, the two thousand sixteen plan, excuse me. Uh, does not show that entrance. That was associated with the, with the temporary special exception permits.
On the, on the current plan, there's an area. Guess that would be west of the building that's. Kind of wooded right now. There looks like there's a little bit of area that's open in there. It looks like maybe there's some gravel. It, I think it says on your current plan that. It's going to remain wooded?
Yeah, that was, that was to, we were going to reestablish some. I think this is the area we're talking about, yeah. Yeah, this would be, this would be reestablishing a wooded area up there.
I will, I will share it so that everyone can see the same thing here. So this area is an existing, uh, existing. Vegetated buffer and then there are with the current plan, an area, uh, it would be essentially north. Uh, northeast of that area with Leland Cypress's or Green Giant Arbor Vikes shown here.
And if you're driving down Frederickburg Road there, that you would see, you can see where that kind of the. The opening is in there and that would be all, all filled in.
I like that, um, plan. I mean, it does create some buffer to the entrance to Big Spring and also the Mr. Hart's future plans for his. Uh, property, it's. I'm sure it doesn't do a lot for it, but it, it's a little bit and the fact that you own that property would be, that maybe you're thinking about doing something else with it. But wooded is good. Anybody got anything else? I, I do have a few more things. I feel like I'm dragging things out, but.
No, not at this time. Go ahead, Anthony, you're, you still have the floor.
This is kind of for Chris. You know, we had some comments on, on the flood plain issue and I don't want to go necessarily into the detail of whatever that loan thing was they did. And got some of it out of the flow, you know, the solar field is not in the flood, flood plain, but technically the rest of the property is. Or where we're talking about for the warehouse and stuff is in the flood plain.
Uh, yes, the best I can do to explain that.
Well, what, I mean, I, my question is, is it? I saw some of the concerns in one of the letters that we got. Um, what, what are the, what kind of concerns you? I mean, is that a, is that a showstopper?
Uh, a- as far as a regulatory process goes, it has, it does have influence on the land use decision we're making this evening, obviously. But as far as a, a regulatory process, this is, this is considered a zone A and so I'll have to speak up a little bit. Do you can't hear me, but the best way I could explain this is B A R C where they owned this eight acres, they did a, uh, they did a Loma. And that modified only the eight acres that they owned at the time. That Loma showed a, an area of flood plain here. And then the rest of it identified as zone X. That did not pertain because they did not own this, talking with the surveyor that did this boundary line adjustment. And performed the Loma survey, a Loma process, I should say, that did not have any influence, legal influence. On what was removed from this portion because they didn't own that portion at the time. So that, that's, that, that's the Loma process of that.
But the proposal was to put, the proposal was to put a building in the flood plain.
Yes, absolutely. And so this particular part of the flood zone is considered zone A. Uh, it does not prohibit dwellings uh, in, in zone A. And it would not prohibit a, as far as the regulatory process, to be clear, it would not prohibit uh accessory structures, that type of thing. Now, now they are, if it's a dwelling, which we're not talking about, I'll do it briefly, it's required to be elevated. Uh, it's required to be elevated one foot above the hundred year flood plain, et cetera. If it's a, it's my understanding, if it's a commercial building like we're talking about. It's required, certain things are required to be elevated, such as your beater bases, those types of things are required to be elevated one foot above the hundred year flood plain. And then depending on the square footage of the building side that has the flow of the, of the, in this case, the creek. Those would be required to have engineered flood vents that allows water to pass through.
So it's, there will be building code.
That, there is, there is building code associated with building a, a commercial uh, building in zone A.
There's nothing we would do here to. To require, put condition on to that stuff. To require, put condition on to that stuff. That's all going to be taken as, uh.
Uh, one of the draft conditions in your, in your, uh, that could be utilized with a recommendation of approval, I should say. Uh, it requires building permit approval. They would be required a building permit to, to build this building. They also have the opportunity, obviously, to revisit the Loma and say, okay, what part of this process, what part of this property is in the zone, zone A? And what property is not? I will say i- it's going to be a, a challenge for, for FEMA when they do. We're working off, uh, maps effective April sixth, twenty twenty, uh, I'm sorry, two thousand. Uh, the last time it was mapped is in nineteen seventy nine, I believe, but it will be interested, uh, to see the updating mapping in thirty years. Because there, there's been properties, uh, both across the road, down, down the river, down the creek and, and elsewhere. That have been removed from the floodplain through the Loma process as well.
Um, okay, um. Want to talk about the TCO a little bit because we, you know, we have a concept for a building. Is that another opportunity to make sure that any building that's put on there looks, uh, Chris, that.
That they will have to get, uh, the, in this particular case, uh, the site plan approval and the building elevations. Well, the building elevations would have to get a certificate of appropriateness from the TCO and the site plan itself, the sophisticated site plan. Of course, we're working with schematic plan now. The site plan itself would have to be approved by the TCO as well.
Hmm.
That the tourism quarter over there.
Right. Do, um, citizens get an opportunity to?
It, it's a public meeting. There is no public hearing associated with that, but it is a public meeting. But, but working with the TCO for, from the last, uh, you know, twenty some odd years now, um, not to speak for the TCO. But as far as the, the, the architectural style and the color schemes that are presented in the package. Uh, that those, those are, are, um, included, some of those design elements, uh, are included in the design and construction guidelines with the TCO. Uh, not, not saying the, 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 the building exterior finishes, but the, certainly the, the cupolas, the green roof, the, the earth tone colors, those type of things. Uh, I think would be well received by the TCO. Yeah, that's.
It couldn't become a Quonset hut or, uh, something.
It, it would have to be approved by the TCO, yes.
What I'm saying is that the standards that they use would.
I, I, I would be surprised if they allowed a, a galvanized, uh, Quonset hut. Yes, sir. Galvanized steel Quonset hut.
But, I mean, on our farms, we have galvanize.
Absolutely. So TCO only deals with commercial development or multifamily development. It does not deal with single family dwelling, uh, single family dwellings, uh, or, or, um. Any agricultural businesses, uh, at all.
So it's still going to look like a warehouse.
What's that?
Still going to look like a warehouse.
Meaning it's going to look like a warehouse. Uh, if, if you, that, that is correct. If you consider the building elevations that they provided, if, if you consider.
Ag warehouse.
Yeah.
Ag warehouse.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, no, if it, this is what is proposed, that's on the screen now. Uh, and, and so i- it, it is a large building, uh, it is a tall building, but it does, in my opinion, as far as the TCO goes. Has some of the attributes that the TCO i- is looking for, desires, if you will.
One out.
All right.
This time we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically present who would like to speak?
Yes, sir. Uh, first up, we have Renee Hansley, I believe. Hacey, I apologize, uh, followed by Richard Hacey.
Yeah, absolutely. It's easier a second time.
All right. Uh, my name's Renee Hacey. I live at three one five Edgar's Way, which is in the Cars Creek District. Um, we would like to address the application by Bark to modify its special exception permit so that they can construct a large building on their site in Cars Creek. When Bark acquired the site at a bargain price, they knew what the zoning was, but yet they have continued to apply for special exceptions in order to get around the zoning that's in the area. This exemption is on a different level altogether, even above all the other exemptions because of the size of the proposed building. This exemption is not for the production of energy, and while I applaud Bark's efforts to expand broadband. This building at this site is not necessary for that exception. The equipment that they propose to store in the building could be stored at another location in the county that is already developed for more industrial uses. So we would like to respectfully request that Bark's request for this special exemption be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Uh. Come on up. State your name, Magisterial District, please.
Uh, Richard Hacey, Cars Creek, the frame address. Uh, all I wanted to add was, look at the size of the building, you know, hundred by what? Twenty-five by some, talking like fifteen thousand square feet worth of building, much larger than a regular barn. And you're right, it's going to look like a warehouse in an agricultural area. Thank you.
Uh, Linda Nicely, followed by James Powers.
I'm Linda Nicely, I'm a bunch of, a bunch of people, but I live across the road from this property. I don't want to see a warehouse down there and, uh, we have farms there and we just don't need a big warehouse.
James, uh, Powers, followed by Becken, Becky Almey.
I'm going to read from, uh, my notes here. Um, so the original site plan for this property was very minimal. You guys are probably familiar with it. Included office space, parking for trucks in the existing lot, a lay down yard behind the building, getting from neighbors. And a small solar array over the once community playing field. It was ten years ago, so I just want to remind the commission that that plan in and of itself was highly contested. Um, there was a lot of concern from neighbors, changing view sheds, light pollution, future expansions, loss of the community field, environmental impacts, threat of imminent domain from Bark. A potential and potential damage to surrounding property values. Uh, we all appreciate what Bark does for the county in providing power and internet. That's been fantastic. But that said, Bark's stewardship of Highland Bell specifically to date has unfortunately only confirmed the concerns we had ten years ago. And frankly, can increase them. Bark has a history of deviating from their site plans, uh, at Highland Bell. And the county has a history of not holding them responsible for that. Again, I think you guys are aware of that. A couple of years into acquiring the property, they violated their site plan. They deforested the western property line at that point in time. Um, exposing an existing vegetated screen. The county did not hold them responsible for that. They didn't say, hey, you have to replace that screen. Instead, what they did was they changed the deed of transfer that the county gave from the, the public to Bark. To allow for, uh, or to remove the non-expansion clause that had existed there, essentially rewarding them for the violation, allowing them to continue. Um. So Bark's next site plan that you referenced, Tony, uh, from two thousand sixteen, that I actually spoke in support of that. I think that site plan has been the best so far. I think the community field, there's a, a lot of space on that map for a real community field if we took some time to figure that out. Um, but that didn't last long. It's been in temporary use for most of their stewardship of the property. So the neighborhood has tolerated all this. Um, it has been an eyesore. I've experienced historically adversarial leadership with Bark. I think these new guys are a great, uh, improvement in that. But, um, but yeah, I've tried to be a good neighbor. I've planted hundreds of trees on my property, great cost to, uh, me to screen what they're doing. I allowed Bark to remove rare American elms along Big Spring Drive to increase their site distance at Highland Bell. I negotiated an easement on behalf of the previous owners of Big Springs so that they could put power through our farm. I even went to the last public hearing in two thousand sixteen and said, I support this site plan. I'm for you, Bark. Um, the current leadership says they want to work with the community to resolve concerns and with me to resolve the easement that they're currently in violation of, that is great. But as of today, nothing has been resolved. Consider this as if it was a solar project like many that you guys have seen, I know recently. Uh, what did you require of those? Now imagine that those solar farms wanted a commercial entrance warehouses, paving a lay down yard, all of this in a floodplain. They haven't followed previous site plans and they submitted this proposal site plan at the last minute. So we're all kind of rushing to get you this information, figure this out. I think Bark can do better. I think the county can do better. Please do not approve this site plan. It gives them way too long a leash to do. We don't even, they don't even know exactly what by their own admission. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Almey, followed by Bill Russell.
Hi, thanks for hearing from us tonight. I am the owner of a number of small businesses here in Rockbridge County. My primary activities are retail and tourism. Uh, we moved to this area intentionally because of the pristine beauty and the rural charm of Cars Creek. And along with our neighbors, the Harts and the Powers and a number of other residents in attendance tonight, our family has invested in economic development in Cars Creek. All within the characteristic of a historic rural village. And I just briefly want to try to read from the comprehensive pan, uh, plan for Rockbridge County in which a rural village area. Is described that appropriate uses would include residences, civic or public uses such as parks, recycling centers, churches. Small scale commercial to support the daily needs of nearby residents. Rural industrial uses dependent on local availability, I'm sorry, available natural resources would also be appropriate. It is my opinion that while Bark has certainly served our rural community by putting in their fiber optic. We're approaching the conclusion of that particular project, and it seems unreasonable to infringe even more upon our small village by changing the zoning in this A two district to industrial. Especially given the availability of suitable land in other areas of Rockbridge County. Additionally, under the comprehensive plan, our planning commission is tasked with preserving the county's traditional rural character. And a warehouse like this and even renewing this temporary use is in, is in clear violation of our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Bill Russell, followed by Steve Hart.
Bill Russell, Cars Creek, um, speaking for myself, also speaking to some degree for the Rockbridge Tax Payers Alliance. Uh, for myself, I, I, I would urge you to not make the changes requested here to the site plan. Uh, speaking for a broader sense from other people who have commented to me, and there have been quite a few from throughout the county. We have deep concerns about the use of the special exception process in the county. We have deep concerns about the planning process in general. And we really would like to ask that the planning commission think seriously about trying to get the county to convene. A commission of some sort to look at the convergence of the, of the comprehensive plan, the zoning documents. And the special exceptions, which seems to be coming of equal weight to the other two. Thank you.
Mr. Hart, followed by Dave Jones.
Steve Hart, Cars Creek. Eight or ten years ago, I stood here and spoke in favor of the new trash collection point built by the county. While I might not look at, like looking at it every day, I recognize it's essential and it has to be done there. It can't be done somewhere else. Five times now, we've been in here discussing Bark's lay down yard. Each time it gets bigger. Last month, we discussed one building or reviewed the site plan this morning. It's actually two buildings totaling thirty-five thousand square feet. That's zero point eight two acres of building plus outdoor storage areas, expanded roadways. Security lighting, stormwater management facilities are not shown. These are inherent industrial and business functions that unlike the trash point can and should be performed in an industrial area of the county. The best time for Bark's board of directors and leadership to recognize this was eight years ago. The best time for the county to tell Bark to place business and industrial operations in area zone for business and industry was eight years ago. The second best time is tonight. Bark has spent money doing what they have done and will undoubtedly have to spend more moving it. However, this is an issue for Bark members to take up with their board of directors. For eight years, we have been assured by Bark and Rockbridge County that these uses are temporary. Tonight is the time to hold Bark and Rockbridge County to their word. Temporary means it comes to an end. Let that happen tonight. Go back to the plan of eight years ago. Offices in the school, trucks parked behind the school, the solar field out front, and if we can pull it off a community field. That makes some level of sense. I can live with that. Well, Mr. Buchanan has indeed tried to be a good neighbor to all of us. He is not Bark. He will leave. We will not. I can even be okay with one last temporary. Extension for one year to allow them to move their facilities, provided that it is both last and temporary. Now, for special exception. I have here our zoning document. A special exception requires a finding of fact that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the policies of the county and the public interest. This is not in the public interest of the people of Cars Creek, as you have heard us state. This is our land use map for Cars Creek. It says the area where we're talking about is a rural village area, as Becky described, or a rural planning area. The next page in our comprehensive plan says the following. Uh, under goals, agricultural areas are to be maintained and incomp- incompatible land uses such as large scale commercial and industrial developments. Will be discouraged in rural areas. This is a large scale commercial industrial development. It says we're supposed to discourage it. Let's do that. We're trying to build a community there. We're putting up our money to do it. We need things that enhance that community, not detract from it, and a twenty-six store, a twenty-six foot building will be like eighteen feet above the fence line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Jones, Cars Creek. Uh, I live on Cars Creek with my wife and two young children in a house that overlooks Bark's Highland Bell office and lay down yard. Uh, it's an eyesore in an otherwise beautiful valley. We are happy customers of Bark and as the CEO of a tech company myself, I'm grateful for their fiber project. That said, we are firmly against their plans to expand their operation at Highland Bell. The original concern of the community when Bark was granted permission to use this space for a temporary lay down yard was that it would indeed become permanent. And that their use of this space would be, become more intrusive. And guess what? That is exactly what is happening. And not only has that happened, but time and again, Bark has not made good on their commitments related to their use of that space, such as the landscaping around that area. And they've taken advantage of the county's inability to actually hold them accountable. One of the original commit, commitments, as we've heard, included building community fields, and that's something that the community actually needs. And I think would go a long way in demonstrating that Bark actually cares about the community around it. Something else I have questions about is why Bark has waited until there's only one month left on their agreement to use that space as a lay down yard. I find myself sort of embarrassed for Bark's leadership because I think this likely means one of two things. Either the leadership at Bark are incompetent because they lack basic foresight and the ability to plan ahead, or worse, they're schemers. They know exactly what they're doing, and this is a feeble attempt at putting the county in a corner. Maybe that's too aggressive. Maybe they're just indifferent because they believe that the county will continue to turn a blind eye at their bad behavior and unkept promises because that's what's been done in the past. And honestly, just by the way they showed up here tonight and the way they seem to just be winging their way through this, I think that's exactly it. My guess is that just a complete lack of preparation for last month's planning commission meeting and a half assed effort at understanding how the Cars Creek community actually feels about their plans demonstrates all of that. The CEO, I know, has met with James Powers, one of our neighbors, and then expressed a willingness to work together, but only should all of this be approved. And that's backwards. He should have first tried working with the community and then brought concrete plans forward when the community, when he felt the community was behind those plans. This is something that could have been done if they were organized, proactive, and if they actually cared about working with us and being good neighbors. But again, what we're left with are nebulous plans and a lot of just trust us when we've been given no good reason to trust them in the past. I think the, uh, Steve Hart's recommendations are all very reasonable. And again, I think if that they put forth a good faith effort in communicating with the neighborhood, with the Cars Creek community. They would find that there's actually a lot of reasonable people there that are grateful for what they've provided to the county, but they haven't taken those steps. Honestly, I think that, uh, the proposed plan by Steve Hart is probably giving them too much leash, you know? And they'll just use any additional time they have to figure out again, how they can make their presence at Highland Bell permanent. But my hope is that Bark and their CEO pick up a lesson or two from people like James Powers and Steve Hart in what it looks like to be a good neighbor.
Thank you. That is all that's signed up now, but we'll recognize anyone else that would like to speak. Absolutely, yes, sir. You could state your name and Magisterial District.
Tim Goodbar, Cars Creek District. Sitting back there and listening to everybody speak, kind of makes me feel like a cat at a dog show because it looks like to me, I'm going to be the only one speaking in favor of this. I am a, a member of B A R C Electric Coffee, have been for near fifty years. There's been a lot of talk about going back to the original plans. Plans change. Plans change. They do change. Maybe what they. Plans change. They do change. Maybe what they envisioned that came as a different leadership. We have a new leadership now. Maybe they think that the leadership's not communicating like maybe so I'm not sure. But under a different leadership, change plans do change. They have to change. B A R C covers a large, large area of Rockbridge County. And myself, probably like everybody sitting behind me, when electricity is out, we want it back on just like it. If they don't have the equipment, the facility does not have the. Poles and whatever else they need to get our juice back on. If they've got to go. Back to Millburn and get poles, that's going to add at least three hours on to my juice being ate. I realize I've had the conversation with Steve. Steve and I are good friends. And we had a right long conversation over this the other afternoon at his farm. And I went there as a friend and I left her as a friend and we left there with the opinion that we have a right to agree to disagree. And regardless of how y'all do this tonight, I'm not going to fall out with Steve over this, but. Somewhere along the line, if y'all approve this, this is going to say all the members of B A R C some money somewhere. Or it could cost them some money somewhere. They suggested here tonight that their equipment be stored somewhere else. Well, if they don't have that facility somewhere else, they're going to have to go buy it. And then plus continue to do what they're doing right there. It's been said here that there is pre-approved to put more solar over there. I won't tell you, I'd rather see a building sitting there and all this gaudy solar system sticking around everywhere in the country that I don't think personally will ever pay for itself. So in closing tonight, I'd like to ask you gentlemen to give serious consideration to issuing permit for them to build their lay down yard there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else that'd like to speak?
First wise from um Fairfield area, and I just wanted to say that there's one. Little thing that I think would be improvement on the landscaping plan. And that's to have a row of um the RVDs on. B A R C property behind the county dumpsters. Because if you're coming down Frederick, everything looks fine on Route sixteen. Why is that? Because it's TCO. You come down Fredericksburg, you're looking right into all that stuff.
Thank you.
Uh, let me check online here if anyone's online that would like to make a public comment. Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Alney. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. I appreciate that. Uh, I was actually there uh onsite, but uh had to leave uh due to some other commitments, but glad that. To get this opportunity. I had actually some uh different prepared comments of. But after listening to uh to the the public comments so far, um, I think it really just boils down to. Three simple questions. Is the Highland Bell site zoned industrial? Well, we know that answer is no. Is thirty thirty five thousand square feet of warehouse space with a twenty nine foot building? An industrial use? I think that answers pretty much yes. As Mr. Hart had discussed, was this lay down yard a permanent special exception? The answer is no, even though it was renewed four times. So based upon those answers. It's not zoned industrial. They're proposing an industrial use. And this was never a permanent special exception. Should this zoning petition, should this special exception be approved? And the answer is unequivocally no. And as a and I was thinking about some analogies of this and and how uh I could convey. What this this looks like. Uh, I'm a pathologist. And the term for spread of cancer from one site to another is called metastasis. That's exactly what's going on here. So I implore you, stop the metastasis. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else online that wishes to make a comment, please use the raise your hand function now. Anyone else in the audience? If not, turn the floor back over to the chair.
Uh, with no further comments, I would like to recognize that the commission received written comments from Ms. Krista Jones, Mr. Brett Greaves. Ms. Nancy Powers and Mr. Steve Hart. Um, and at this time, we will with no uh with no further public comments, we're going to close the public hearing. Gentlemen, let's discuss.
I don't know where we lost our compass, but. You read the comprehensive plan. I've already lost one vote. On what substantial was. And this one, there's no way you would look at. If this was just flat farmland that I would vote yes to have this property on it. What's there now? Uh, it can look like a farm barn and it goes on ag land. But this isn't the ag use. You can call it what you want. We created this problem and I'm including myself because I wasn't here when this started. How do you fix it? And that's what we're being asked to do. You got something that was supposed to be temporary. It's not temporary. Got something that you know, you look at it, the last person said it all. How do you correct that? And now where do you go back to? I think uh that's the same breezy asked a good question. What happens if the board of supervisors says net? Why did they say yes before it was temporary? It's not temporary. It's it's going to be there. Something's going to be there. And man, I would vote to deny, but I don't know whether that serves the right purpose. And I'm open to suggestions.
I mean, that's what I was trying to get at too, was it just what happens if 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 there's a uh denial? It's pretty clear we can have some imagination and on how bad it could be. If the border supervisor is to to approve it. Um, I think that, you know, I think the best argument, and this is not to you to you two guys personally, but. Bark has had kind of a history. Um, it's clear not being part of it. I think that's the. That is a um a concern that I think a lot of people have, and I think it's a valid concern. Um, I do. The last speaker I thought had an excellent point too, and I thought about this. Pretty strongly is that there will be an impact on the members of the cooperative. Financially, probably. And secondly, response. I mean, the the majority of electric in the county. Is from Bark. And most of the area Bark is is rural, which means they're more likely to to go down. And the response will will slow. So to me, that's that's what it kind of it boils down to is that um. Where do we put the what puts us one way or the other? Um, the other thing I said, I like to propose, see if Chris would tell me is that. We talked about temp another temporary, which I'm scared to death of, but is there other alternatives we have? I mean, we would have to. We would have to deny it and replace it with something, right? Or no, but I mean, how would we do that?
Uh, meaning if the board of supervisors denied the permit?
No, what would our could we recommend something other than denial or uh approval?
Uh, no, you have sixty days to act on the application. That's as we consider the date of application. Um, the day of the application is the first date that that y'all received the package uh last month, obviously. Uh, if I recall correctly, that extends us or that gets us to May the fourth. So if y'all don't make a recommendation between now and May fourth, it is deemed approved and moves forward to the board of supervisors.
When 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 does it expire?
Uh, I believe April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
So there's nothing we can do to give them a few more days or months or a year?
No, not at this time. Now, they do have the ability, let's say if it does get denied with the board of supervisors, they would have the ability to to. Uh, reapply for a a temporary special exception permit. And that that goes back to the earlier discussion, we would just place a period of validity on it.
So essentially, the only way they get an extension is. The way it is currently, the lay down yard would be to deny. And then they'd have to come back and reapply and.
And and it would be a special exception process from from the very beginning. Yes.
Otherwise, by April fifteenth, that all that stuff's got to go.
Uh, we would, we would allow some flexibility. I mean, in any case scenario, we would let some flexibility way greater than fifteen days. I mean, we've been working. Other problematic properties for a lot longer than that.
Tony, I along the same lines, you know, if we gave them extension. What are we looking for? Um, and we don't have an exact set of building plans. Uh. They've reached out to the community pretty well. Um, I I'm struggling with the same question you're struggling right right now.
I mean, I one of the things that I I do agree with one of the speakers is that. I'm not, I'm still not sure that. The plans so. Are convincing enough that there won't be further expansion or coming back for something else again.
Yes.
Uh, I think it's a fair question to ask Bark. Um, you know, going back to the whatever the twenty fifteen sixteen plan. You have the right to expand the solar field if 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 we if you didn't get the approval to put the late permanent lay down yard or warehouses in. What would you use that that land for? Because I mean, it's your land. You have a right to use it.
Um, I don't think it would. I don't think we would have any plans to expand the the solar field. There there's. Community solar was a it was a a concept when it was done. Like I said, I I think I don't know the history behind it, but. Bark was the first one in the state to do it and there was a time where Bark, you know, was it was, I guess, good to be the first one, but. I'm not sure that it has the initial benefit that it long term that it did for for the members. There are some that just. Some members that do that do purchase the blocks and they do. They do like that, but I don't think that we have a huge demand that would say we should, we should make it bigger. So it would, it would just have to go back to some some form of, you know, it's set there. I mean, I don't know that we would do much with it unless you told us to, but. It's it would probably just sit there empty. Bents around it, so.
I have to say, you know, I've worked with Bark a lot. My properties on Bark and as a builder, uh Bark did fantastic work for me and that. All the Cars Creek people have complimented Bark. They're not. They're not debating whether Bark is doing a great job, but. There are some defenses that haven't come up tonight. The and and Mr. Buchanan touched on it that their scope out there of what they were expecting to do out of that spot has changed so often. There was some bad uh management by Bark and I'm aware of that. But I don't think every all these special exceptions and temporary. Uh, permits were intentionally. Abusive of our system. I think just the scope of work has changed. Did they anticipate having all this work down here in Rockbridge County when this uh when the first laid first yard was put in? It's hard to say.
I wouldn't know.
Okay.
I don't know what the. I know the original plan was to build fiber to everybody's town. That original plan that relied on a lot of brains that never came through it.
Let's see here. Any additional discussion, gentlemen? If not, would any commission member like to make a motion at this time?
Well, to see where we are, I'll I'd make a motion to recommend to the board of supervisors that the application to amend the conditions associated with March twenty. Eight, two thousand sixteen approved special exception permit for public utility. In the agricultural and general use A two zoning district on the property located at nineteen seventy two Big Spring Drive. Lexington, Virginia, two, four, four, five, zero, further identified as. Uh, map number forty seven dash A dash fifty. That's fifteen. Point two, four acres per tax record located on the northeast side of the intersection. Of West Midland Trail. That's Route sixty and Fredericksburg Road, also Route sixty be denied.
We have a motion to deny we by Tony Sbrizzi and a motion to. Deny by Bob Kramer or a second by Bob Kramer. All those in favor say aye. We have two, two ayes. Uh, all those opposed.
Opposed nay.
Nay.
Nay. The motion does not carry. Do I have another? Do I have to define those? Let's see that the nays were. Sandra Phoebe and Whitmore. The ayes were Kramer and Sbrizzi for the record. Do I have another motion?
I make a motion to recommend to the board of supervisors that the application to amend the conditions associated with the March twenty eighth, twenty sixteen approved special exception permit. For a public utility in agricultural and general use A two zoning district. On the property located nineteen seventy two Big Spring Drive Lexington, Virginia, further identified as tax map forty seven dash A dash fifty. Fifteen point two, four acres per tax record located on the northeast side. Of the intersection of West Midland Trail, Route sixty and Fredericksburg Road, Route sixty be approved. With the following conditions. Substantial compliance with the concept plan prepared by Parker Electric dated. February eighteenth, twenty fifteen with twelve revisions with the last revision date of March twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Expect acceptance of a fully executed decommissioning agreement on the project owner, developer. And the county within ninety days of approval of the amended special exception permit, the decommissioning agreement shall include the following. The anticipated life of the project anonymized estimated decommissioning cost in current dollars certified by a professional engineer licensed in the Commonwealth with experience in preparing decommissioning estimates. It was engaged by the applicant. See the method of ensuring that funds will be available for decommissioning and restoration. The method which the decommissioning costs will be kept current and a requirement for the physical remover of all solar equipment. And above ground structures from the property, including but not limited to buildings, machinery, equipment, cabling and connections to. Two transmission lines, equipment shelters, security barriers, electrical components, landscaping, foundations and road. Unless the landowner submits a. Unless the landowner submits a written request to the zoning administrator that such roads and or landscaping remain in place. A requirement, require, a requirement that below grade structures such as foundations, underground collection, cabling, mounting beams, footers and all other equipment installed with the system shall be completely removed. However, foundations and footers may be allowed to remain in, if the landowner provides such a written request to the zoning administrator that such foundations and or footers remain in place. Within ninety days of acceptance of the commissioning agreement, the project owner and or developer shall submit a bond irrevocable letter of credit, cash escrow and and other appropriate surety in the amount of the estimate approved by the zoning administrator, which shall secure the cost of removing the system and restoring the site as specified in the decommissioning plan and include a mechanism to increase the amount of financial surety to account for every, to account for inflation every three years. The owner developer will ensure that the bond irrevocable letter of credit, cash escrow and or other sureties shall remain in full force and effect until the zoning administrator or appointee has inspected the site and verified that solar energy system above and below grade have been fully removed and property disposed of once all decommissioning tasks are determined to have been satisfied those by the zoning administrator. The bond irrevocable letter of credit, cash escrow and or other sureties shall be promptly released. Four, no razor barbed wire should be used for security fencing. Five, chain link fences shall be green or black rubber coated at the minimum height of seven feet shall be installed around the perimeter as shown on the concept site plan dated February eighteenth of twenty fifteen with twelve revisions. The last revision date being March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Privacy slats at minimum heights seventy-eight inches shall be installed and maintained on the chain link fence along Big Spring Road, Fredericksburg Road and West Midland Trail. Any outdoor lighting shall meet the requirements of section thirteen oh three lighting ordinance, all lighting associated with the lay down yard, three-sided building and the warehouse shop light maintenance shall be on motion sensors. Uh, any replacement of, any replacement power poles or new communication, new communication tower should be made of wood. Nine, any power lines connecting the solar array to bark lines and any fiber lines shall be installed underground as depicted on the concept site plan dated February eighteenth, twenty fifteen with twelve revisions with the last revision date of March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, I'll exit number ten, all existing vegetation on the property along Big Spring Drive, Fredericksburg Road and West Midland Trail shall be preserved. All, all plantings shall be, be maintained in healthy condition. All proposed plantings except for the proposed plantings associated with the immediate area of the existing interest to the lay down yard on Big Spring Road shall be installed within one year of the approval of the special exception permit. Eleven, buildings shall be consistent with the building elevations titled Bark Electric, Bark Electric Conceptual Plans Warehouse slash Shop Light Maintenance and Bark Electric Conceptual Plans, three-sided building for covered storage parking. The buildings may be smaller in size and height and shall not be larger in size and height than shown on the concept plan dated February eighteenth, twenty fifteen with twelve revisions with the last revision date of March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. The warehouse slash shop light maintenance buildings shall be constructed within six years of the date of approval of the special exception permit. If constructed, the three-sided building for covered storage slash parking shall be constructed with, within eight years of the approval of the special exception permit. Uh, and number twelve, approval contingent on Virginia Department of Transportation Erosion and Sediment slash Stormwater Management Building Department Tourism Corridor Overlay Board approvals and all applicable state and federal regulations.
I'll go ahead and second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
I'd like to propose some amendments to that. Can I do that now?
Well, now that the motion's on the floor, the motion needs to go forward, but unless you, you want to make a proposal to
amend the
conditions.
Conditions.
Amendment to conditions.
I thought that's the time we would do that.
Yeah, this is good. The motion's left for you. You want to make, you want to make amendments to the motion that's on the floor, which would be the conditions. Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to propose for number eleven. The timeframe given to put the building up. Sorry. Yeah. Um, I think what there's about six years. They've got six years to put the warehouse up and they got eight years to put the, the wing two up. Everybody. I could cut that significantly.
You can, at this stage, appropriate thing, but just for you, go ahead and make a motion and say to cut it to a certain time to provide the alternative wording.
I'll cut it in half, three and four.
And the reason?
We've been giving them temporaries and this is what, what's, what's make it end? Well, what happens in eight years when they haven't done it yet? What's now, what's now the proposal better for the neighbors that don't want it? I'm just saying, give them less on the door.
And there's budget, budgetary issues too, that we had in the letter, you know, how it fits in the budget, so.
I withdraw that. I do have another one that I would like to add in terms of vehicle maintenance. Vehicle maintenance at the, what I'd like to add is vehicle maintenance and storage yard shall be restricted to minimal activities that do not generate excessive noise such as checking fluid levels, tire pressure adjustments and battery charging. Noisy operations including major repairs, engine revving or use of power tools are prohibited. That defines light. Right now, all we have is the word is light maintenance. No, I'm saying it's in their concept that shows on their drawing that it's like now.
So, so just for, for the record and for clarification, uh, the, the by law state, any amendment to the original motion unless accepted by the member making the original motion and the member seconding the same shall be subject to vote by the planning commission before tax action is taken to the original motion, so.
So that's, so what we're doing right now is correct.
But the, the
It goes back to Adam then, right?
That he accepts that, yes. As well as Mr. Whitmore.
I mean, as far as light and maintenance, define that to me.
What's that?
I mean, if, I mean, if you have a low tire, what are you gonna do? You go fill it with air.
Right. I got pressure adjustments, that's fine. That's, that's in my list.
What if you need a brake job on a truck?
They take it to Millboro.
It doesn't bother many.
See a need for that. I've never heard noise being brought up as a concern. It's, it's all visual, the size of the building. Y'all wouldn't be doing work on unless it was an emergency repair and power was already out and you had to get a line truck going. I don't think you'd be working on equipment after hours per se, would you?
No.
Not. I mean, we can, we can leave it in there. I can live with it, but I mean, no power tools. I think that's, that's overly restrictive for for just what they want to do.
I'll scratch that. I mean, you, you have a wedding venue right next door to this place. And I know no, no noise has not been brought up, but I mean, I think that, that's valid. I mean, the kind of things we're concerned about is, is those guys, what goes off the property.
Probably make more noise loading up equipment and poles than, than doing a little bit of light maintenance, but yeah.
Well, I'm just, I'm just defining like maintenance is all I'm doing.
Yeah.
Except brake jobs. Um, there's, the equipment has more than just, they're more than just trucks, they're bucket trucks, things like that. There could be.
We allowed to ask B R C's opinion about that?
Well, during this time, you can ask anyone for their opinion input during your discussion.
Light maintenance. Did you hear his definition and is it doable?
Yeah, I mean, today we don't do any, we don't do any maintenance over there other than just light maintenance. If we gotta, we gotta change out a hydraulics or something. Our guys will come over, our mechanics will come over from Millboro, but
Okay. If you're, if you're pulling an engine apart or something, it's somewhere else.
I don't think they're gonna tear an engine apart there. There's
There's no mechanic there. No. Okay. Alright.
Would you propose a, a building that you could do all that stuff in now? So I'm just, to me, I think
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I think it sounds like light maintenance is, uh, is worth defining, so. I think it'll be okay.
Yeah, I can reread it if you want. I'll take out the, and I, I felt that, I don't know. Power tools, I guess, could be considered a lot of different things, so I will, I will concede that. Uh, vehicle maintenance and storage yard shall be restricted to minimal activities that do not generate excessive noise such as checking fluid levels, tire pressure adjustments and battery charging. Noisy operations including major repairs, engine revving are prohibited onsite.
And Tony, are you reading that from somewhere?
I wrote it.
Uh, do I have a copy of that?
Uh, I thought I explained it, if I may.
Is that from that email?
Yeah, I may not have, but.
I mean, is it a copy of the email that I provided?
Could be, I'm not, I'm sorry.
What you're reading there now?
Oh, I wrote it on a piece of paper myself.
Uh, could you read that one more time for me, please?
I can give it to you.
Alright, so it says, uh, vehicle maintenance at the storage yard shall be restricted to minimal activities such uh, activities that do not generate excessive noise such as checking fluid levels, tire pressure adjustments and battery changes. Uh, noisy operation, did you include that?
Yes.
Uh, noisy operations including major repairs.
I crossed out this.
Uh, engine revving are prohibited onsite.
There's this thing we're revising.
We're, we're adding a condition. And that's if, part of the bylaws, that's if Adam and David agree to amending the original motion.
I agree.
What's that?
We haven't.
No, we haven't voted. I accept the, as a second.
I accept.
Okay, we, there was a motion on the floor by Adam Sandridge, seconded by David Whitmore. This time I'll call for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Commission member Sandridge voted, uh, yes. Commission member Kramer voted no. Commission member Whitmore voted yes. Commission member Sbrizzi voted no. And I vote yes. Motion carries three to two votes.
I'd like to take a little five minute break too, if you could.
Let's, let's keep it a five.
Just five, five, five tight, everybody.
Two more public hearings and it's
Yeah. I was waiting.
Go either way.
So many of these, I can go either way.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody said they liked the same way, except if I wanted to carry out the opinion.
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, I think the welfare pieces, the welfare pieces are one of the factors. I think it's what it knows.
First time I'm right away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What? Hey, you guys are the first one.
No, no, you don't have to. I mean, I think it's gonna be a very Let me give you this, cause you requested this. Done. So yesterday. Going to a very impartial.
Four more is coming to make.
This, this modifications that have been made are the ones that have, were discussed already, the joint solar committee. And I can say, I don't have a track.
Yeah.
But, but funny enough, what we did was
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we just struck that entirely out because it was redundant with availability and then, and then
No, it, it, hey, you were the best on the and Buddy Coward was the best on the
That is a long rant.
I think it would be a very rude I don't know what
Oh, I know a lot of them, they're, they're
Yes, sir.
Well, I looked at that on the zoning.
Yeah.
I live in Altisco and that's about four hours. Dominion Cove.
See, all of that there, how that's true, all that was on Dominion. He goes up fire, so the hot iron joins that line and goes up there's a line. Good deal. I love that country. I've been there about all my life.
Yeah. I guess.
I like your
Way too much time I missed.
Hey, y'all got any rope on it?
Uh, we might be getting, we might be getting sunned, yeah. We think. Oh, did you? Okay. Oh, that's current push, you know, we'll be cutting more timber and Oh, it's, yeah. We're not done yet either.
No, we still got
two more.
We're saving, we're gonna table that discussion.
Um.
Are you taking off?
Yeah.
No, no, I'm talking about, there was a brief discussion on the solar.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree with you on that, but it kinda, it's very but you gotta thank me to see, uh, he's only the son two year. Mike Thomas, he have them it was before that.
Then it was
Alright, there's nobody How are you?
Is Jay Lewis coming?
Alright.
He's gotta recuse himself?
Yep.
That'll make an interesting Okay, Chris.
Yep.
Should I push it a little bit here? Okay, let's, alright, everybody, let's, uh, let's reconvene, ladies and gentlemen, try to get this thing knocked out. Okay. Shit's on me.
We gotta get these done before midnight because then it's not, uh,
Not the same date?
Or at, or after six P M.
Let's, let's roll. Okay. Number nine, Virginia Electric and Power Company, D B A Dominion Power. Public hearing, application for a special exception permit to rebuild a portion of its existing hundred and fifteen K V transmission line in the ag and limited uses. transmission line in the ag and limited uses A one zoning district. The agricultural and general use is A two zoning district and the residential general R one zoning district. Chris?
Yes. I'm gonna promote a few people, the panelists here. Uh, Miss Carr and Miss Hackney, I certainly appreciate you hanging in there with us. I was just sort of joking, saying we have to get this done before midnight, because then our, uh, notice of public hearings are, are not, uh, on the ninth after, after, uh, at, or after six P M. Uh, so, so joking aside, I certainly appreciate y'all's, uh, patience going through this. I did know that they were anticipating joining us via Zoom, and so that was somewhat of the, the idea of putting them last, certainly not realizing we were going this late. Uh, with that being said, we have two public hearings associated with, uh, Virginia Electric and Power Company, of course, D B A Dominion Power, uh, mailing address of five hundred Dominion Boulevard, Glen Allen, Virginia, two, three, zero, six, zero, has made an application for a special exception to rebuild approximately six point seven seven mile portion of its one hundred and fifteen K V transmission line that is located on the south side of the southern intersection of Glasgow Highway and River Road heading north and ending at the western limits of Buena Vista, uh, uh, western limits of, of Buena Vista, Virginia. Um, the proposed rebuild project is located in the agricultural trans, oh, excuse me, agricultural limited use districts, A one, agricultural and general use districts, A two, and in the general residential zoning district. Uh, per section six oh two point oh three of the regulations, public utilities are used by special exception in the A one zoning district. Per section six oh three point oh nine, uh, oh three dash nine of the regulations, public utilities are used by special exception in the A two zoning district. And, uh, per section six oh four point oh three dash three of the regulations, public utilities are used by special exception in the R one zoning district. With that being said, I'd like to, uh, turn the floor over to, I, I believe, Miss Carr to start with. Uh, Miss Carr, if you could just briefly go over, uh, or not briefly, take your time, uh, to, to go over the, uh, what is existing, what is proposed, the number of existing poles and the number of, uh, uh, new poles associated with the project.
Sure, thank you. Can I get a sound check? Can you hear me?
We can hear you very well. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen really quickly. And can you see my screen?
Uh, not yet, but no.
But we can hear you.
We can hear you fine, but you were back to, uh, back to the Zoom, looking at us.
Did it look like it was trying to share my screen?
It's, it's blacking out now.
Okay.
If, if you want to reference, they, they do have all, uh, there you go. It's coming up now, I believe. Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'll try to make this quick. Thank you, everybody. Good to see you again. I've been in your presence several times over the last few years. There's a lot going on at Dominion Energy. So after almost one hundred years of service, these structures are near the end of their service life and need to be replaced to maintain reliability and safety standards. What you're looking at here is a structure comparison. We are proposing as part of this special exception application, proposing to replace thirty five structures. Those structures are current lattice tower structures. We will be replacing them primarily with new weathering steel H frame structures. We've got a few monopoles that you see there on the far right. Um, the weathering steel gives them, of course, the brown appearance to complement the aesthetics of Rockbridge County. I think you're used to seeing these weathering steel poles as we've been very busy in Rockbridge County up, upgrading our lines. The overall average proposed height is seventy five feet. That is not much different from what exists. Where we have height increases, it's usually two to three to five feet. There are several structures that will actually be decreasing in height, so we don't expect a lot of visual impact due to any height increases. We are starting this project. This total project is about seven miles long. We'll begin in the fall of this year. It'll, construction will take about a year. And we'll be starting at the southern end near Glasgow, working our way up to Buena Vista. I was there presenting phase one of the project. That's wrapping up right now, and everything went well. Going to share one more thing. Let's see. I wanted to share, this is called a backyard app. Uh, we alerted all of the residents who live adjacent to this transmission line by a follow-up postcard a month ago. And we encourage folks to go to our website where they can view this backyard app. So what you see is the seven mile long section, starting down here at Glasgow, going all the way up to Buena Vista. Um, what's interesting about here is anybody has access to this, and if you zoom in and click on one of these structures, you can see the existing structure type with the existing height and what that replacement structure will look like and how tall that will be. So this is a really good tool, just to get everybody familiar with what's coming. And we hope that people will actively look at this and call us if they have any questions. But definitely wanted you to see this. Chris, that's about all I have. Did I mention, what you see here is a total of fifty three structures as part of this seven mile long rebuild project. For this first application here, we're talking about thirty five total structures to be replaced, mostly with weathering steel H frames and a few monopoles. There are eleven new structures to be added. You can see those here signified by the white dots. Um, this area here is Forest Service territory, so that is not subject to any special exception applications through the county. We work with the Forest Service to get permits with them. The reason for the new structures is just bas- basically due to new safety standards. Um, engineering requirements have changed over the last hundred years. Where the new structures are located, they're usually down in the valleys. And that just helps our engineers comply with updated requirements. And with that, I would take any questions. I know you've got the application material in front of you.
Thank you. Chris, I'll go ahead. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for the applicant?
We, we had, um, with the other one we did, some of them went up through farmland, and there were precautions they had to take and timeframes. Is anything here?
Uh, yes, so the, the precious copy I have is. I got the pressure, so all the same, but. So you, as, sorry. With, with. Such like the other public hearings this evening, you have a, a motion, uh, to approve with conditions. A motion to set over, motion to, uh, continue a public hearing, motion deny. So with that being said, there, there is, uh, to answer your question about implementation, uh, implementation of the project by November first, twenty twenty five, and project completion by, uh, January first, twenty twenty nine, with up to a four-month extension of the completion date upon written request by the applicant to the zoning administrator detailing the reasons for extension.
Well, I mean, don't, I mean, am I remembering wrong that, that, that?
What was the other part of that?
That they only could do it out of the farming season, during the winter time, on, over the farmland, if that, uh.
So we, we, um, you're, if you're thinking back to phase one of this project, that was about a mile and a half stretch down there near Glasgow. Mr. Locker and, and Eccles Farm Property, those were both actively farmed. Our access, construction access team works closely with the farmer, and we work through the local extension office to compensate for any crop damage. And so that's gone well with, with both of those landowners on phase one. Very used to working through that process at Dominion.
Okay, but I, I thought there was actually, you know, a a timeframe where, when they were active farming, that you weren't working. I mean, it looks like your, that part was nearly, if it's not finished, it's pretty close to finished now, which I guess I'm not a farmer, but, um, that would be the right time.
So, so to answer your question on that particular one, uh, the, uh, implementation of the project was by April. Uh, and this is, this is associated with the floodway, which is the Mr. Locker's field. Uh, a, a, a smaller portion than the phase one, overall phase one. Obviously, directly after this, we have a, we, we have a public hearing associated with the, uh, floodway. But in that particular case, it was an implementation of the project by October twenty first, twenty twenty four, and project completion by April first, twenty twenty five.
That was a, a very short segment of rebuild project. We were able to coordinate with, with those landowners and schedule our construction, because it was such a short distance, to assist with some of their concerns. Um, we operate all of our rebuild projects. We operate under planned outages through our regional transmission operator, PJM. Those outages are often planned a year or two in advance. And so it's, it, it's not feasible for us to not work in agricultural easements um, for a seven mile long rebuild, but we do very closely coordinate with, with landowners who, who farm their land. And they're compensated. We do that all over the state of Virginia and North Carolina.
Gentlemen, any other comments before we open the public hearing?
All right, uh, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically present who would like to speak?
Yeah, I didn't, didn't know, I didn't plan to come on this, but that's my cornfields, you know. At least laughing, Mr. Locker and, and Mr. Eccles. Uh, Dominion's been great. I'm telling, I couldn't, I spent an hour and a half down there with them today. Phase two project will be done in that cornfield, exactly like phase one was. We will plant the crop. We will have the crop out of there by first of October, and then they can go in and do their job. Couldn't ask for better people. They, but they've been excellent to work with. And, uh, there, there's always some delays, uh, even in the phase one. There's some delays going on right now. Some of it I'm not going to be able to plant, but they have already made arrangements for that I, I will be reimbursed, but I cannot plant because of some technical problems that they had. So, uh, uh, folks, uh, again, they've been great to work with. Couldn't answer a better partnership than what they have been.
Thank you. Chris, is there anybody else physically present to speak? If not, we can move to computer and phone.
See what else in the room that'd like to speak? Uh, not hearing anyone. Uh, we, we, uh, if you'd like to utilize your, if you'd like to speak during this public climate, please utilize your raise hand button now. Not seeing any, I'll turn the floor back over to the chair.
Are there any objections to closing the public hearing? Would the commission like to continue the public hearing to the next planning commission meeting? Or closing the public hearing, okay. With no further public comments, we'll close the public hearing. And at this time, if you guys want to have another discussion about the application, I think we're talked out, okay?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, would anybody like to make a, is it time to make a motion? I think it is. Let's make a motion.
I'll, I'll do this one. I make a motion to recommend to the board of supervisors that the special exception permit for a public utility to rebuild a portion of the one hundred and fifteen K V transmission line located on the southwest side of the southern intersection of Glasgow Highway, Route five oh one and River Road, Route six, six, three, heading north and ending at the western limits of the city of Buena Vista, Virginia, South Tenth Street, and the agricultural limited uses A one zoning district, the agricultural and general uses A two zoning district, and the residential general R one zoning district. For L D R section six oh two point oh three seven, six oh three point oh three nine, and six oh four point oh three two, be approved with the following conditions. Substantial compliance with the schematic plan mapboard, four pages, titled balcony falls to Buena Vista Transmission Line number twenty six, rebuild phase two. Substantial compliance with the chart titled Table one, existing and proposed structure types and heights with an allowance of a ten percent variation in structure height. For all structures referenced therein, no structure shall, shall exceed one hundred and ten feet in height. All replaced and new structures shall be constructed of core tin weathered steel that provide a patina finish. Crossarms associated with the proposed structure shall be constructed of galvanous steel or core tin weathered steel that provide a patina finish. Proposed, number three, proposed structure types shall be constructed as described in the chart Table one, existing and proposed structure types and heights with an allowance for modifications to the proposed structure types for structures identified as twenty six slash two fifty six and twenty six, twenty six slash two fifty nine. Number four, approval contingent on final V dot and erosion and sediment control approvals. And number five, implementation of the project by November one, twenty twenty five. Project completion by January one, twenty twenty nine, with up to a four-month extension of the completion date upon a written request by the applicant to the zoning administrator detailing the reasons for the extension.
I'd say that.
We have a motion and a sec, a motion by David Whitmore, seconded by Bob Kramer. Uh, let's have a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all those opposed. We have no nays. We have a unanimous vote. Motion carries with a, uh, five to zero vote. Uh, the next one is Virginia Power again. Virginia Electric and Power Company, D B A Dominion Power, public hearing, application for a special exception permit to rebuild a portion of the existing one hundred and fifteen K V transmission line within the zone A E hatch floodway in the flood hazard overlay district F H dash one.
Uh, yes, uh, Virginia Electric and Power Company, D B A Dominion Power, five thousand Dominion Boulevard, Glen Allen, Virginia, two, three, zero, six, zero, has made an application for a special exception permit to rebuild a portion of its one hundred and fifteen K V transmission line that is located in the flood hazard, uh, overlay district. That's the F H one, uh, district. And this is particularly the floodway, its own A E hatched, again floodway. Uh, while the overall project consists approximately six point seven seven miles, beginning, uh, at the south southern intersection of Glasgow Highway and River Road, heading north and ending in the western limits of the city of Buena Vista. Uh, there are, uh, four, uh, excuse me, there are three. I thought I missed, I thought I missed uh, wrote that. There are three existing structures that are proposed to be rebuilt, and one proposed new double deadhead H frame tower that are located in the floodway. Uh, there are two portions of the rebuild that are located in the floodway. The first is located on the south side intersection uh, of Glasgow Highway. That's Mr. Locker's Field, uh, that Mr. Smith Farms, uh, at the second area of the rebuild is located, and that is located in the floodway is on the north side of River Road, approximately one point five five miles west of the northern intersection of Glasgow Highway and River Road. Per section six oh eight point eleven dash two, parentheses two of the regulations, public utilities and public facilities are used by special exception in zone A E hatch floodway. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Miss Carr.
Thank you. You covered it well, Chris. Yes, so for this special exception, it's only applies to four structures. Three of those mirror the first image I showed you earlier. The first three structures across the locker property will be weathering steel monopoles, not H frames. And the additional structure in the floodway further up the project, about halfway up in the low line area, will be an H frame structure, weathering steel as well. Um, similar structure increase heights about eight to ten feet on, for those monopole structures that will be replacing the lattice steel structures. So I know you've got the information in front of you. If you'd like me to share anything, I'm happy to do so.
And, and on this, thank you, Miss Carr. This particular one, we did put in, uh, uh, more detailed maps than obviously the overall one, uh, e- especially pertaining, uh, a- as much as the other ones, I should say, but, uh, pertaining to the new structure, which is identified as twenty six, two fifty one, with the proposed height of ninety six point eight feet. And again, that's located on the, uh, north side of River Road.
Uh, if you guys are done, we'll, uh, this, before we open the public hearing, any discussion here? Uh, I don't believe so. So we are going to, at this time, we're gonna open the public hearing. Anybody physically present that would like to speak? Is there anybody on computer or phone?
Uh, anyone like to raise their hand? Please feel free to do so now. Not seeing any, I'll turn the floor back over to the chair.
Are there any objections to closing the public hearing? Would the commission like to continue the hearing to the next planning commission meeting? We're gonna close the public hearing with no further public comment. With no further public comments, we will close the public hearing.
I make a motion to recommend to the board of supervisors that the special exception permit for a public utility to rebuild a portion of the 115 KV transmission line located on the southwest side of the southern intersection of Glasgow Highway Route 501 and River Road Route 663 in zone AE hatched with the floodway in the flood hazard overlay district. FH dash one be approved with the following conditions. Number one substantial compliance with the schematic plan with applicable structures 26 slash 279, 26 slash 280, 26 slash 281 and 26 slash 251 titled balcony falls to Buena Vista transmission line number 26 rebuild dash phase two map board dash four pages. Number two substantial compliance with applicable structures 26 slash 279, 26 slash 280, 26 slash 281 and 26 slash 251 in the chart titled table one. Existing and proposed structure types and heights with an allowance of 10% variation in structure height for all structures referenced therein. No structure shall exceed 110 feet in height. All replaced and new structures shall be constructed with a corten or weathered steel that provide a patina finish cross arms associated with proposed structures shall be constructed of galvanized steel or corten slash weathered steel that provide a patina finish. Three proposed structure types with applicable structures 26 dash 279, 26 slash 280, 26 slash 281 and 26 slash 251 shall be constructed as described in the chart table one. One existing and proposed structure types and heights. Approved, number four approved contingent on final V dot and erosion and sediment control approvals. Number five, implementation of the project by November 1, 2025 and projected completion by January 1, 2029 with up to a four month extension of the completion date upon a written request by the applicant to the zoning administrator detailing the reasons for the extension.
We have a motion by Bob Kramer. Do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Adam Sandridge. All those in favor. All those opposed, say nay. The vote is unanimous. The motion carries with a five to zero vote. Thank you. I think we're going to talk about zoning text amendments. Let's really have a deep conversation about that.
There are a couple of people stuck around for it. Pleasure of the chair. We allow some brief comments if they would like to make some possibly. But what we have done, and there's, there's a couple of copies over there.
What, what we have, what we has, the staff has done since the, the last joint meeting, obviously we had a joint meeting with the solar committee, the planning commission, board of supervisors. There were, there were some, there was a good discussion during that meeting. And so we have modified the zoning, the, the drafts, solar ordinance accordingly with that one. You'll notice essentially what came out of that, Aviva, you may be able to update me when, when I need to, but there was some discussion on the allowance of decreased setbacks to avoid prime farmland. That was consensus of all groups. Essentially, we put that in there. Some other parts of the conversation included the, the chapter that stated the burden of.
Go to the paragraph, can you listen to the paragraph?
I can, I can actually do it better that way.
Anybody interested in table in this to someone at home? Is anybody interested in table in this the other time? I know we've got people waiting, but.
We, we can do it briefly. I mean, we will, we'll spend less than five minutes if you want. And I put this on there because.
Five minutes worth of notes on this thing, so.
Yeah, no, and there will be discussion last time, but if there's no objections, we'll just review what we have done since the last meeting. Since our last joint meeting. All right. The first one that we have done modified was the 71703. It uses state general guidelines and requirements. We have modified that to modifications. There were some redundant statements in there. But one main thing that there were some, some discussion on at the, the joint meeting was the part that the county may reduce the burden of the applicant on one or more of these criteria. If the county concludes that the goals of this ordinance are better served by thereof. And so you could see that we've modified, completely modified 71703, removed that statement and then kept the statement in there in consideration of any request to modify any, it said provisions. Now we say requirements of this ordinance, the planning commission board supervisor shall consider the, the, shall consider the provisions of section 501.02 as well as good zoning principles and consistency with the comprehensive plan. The second thing we have done was the setbacks associated with setbacks as it relates to prime farmland. And that it can be found in 71712. The, the solar panels own, what we added there towards the last sentence is decreased setbacks may be considered for application where landowners holdings include adjacent property, comma, the existing topography warrants decreased setbacks, comma, and/or to avoid prime farmland. The last thing I would say major change we did is we removed what was 717 dash 14 that associated with battery storage projects. We, as discussed at the, at the joint meeting, we feel like that's better suited in another part of battery storage projects, regardless if it's associated with a, a solar field or a substation would be better suited as a separate category as a use by special exception in most of, if not all zoning districts. And then if, if there's a battery storage component associated with a solar field, that would be two special exception applications. One for the, for the solar facility itself. And the second one for a battery storage that in that case would be associated with the with the solar facility. With that being said, there might have been a few other small things, but that was the by far the majority. Yep. So, so with that being said, I thought it would be beneficial. Beneficial just to put this on the agenda to keep the ball rolling for us. What we are anticipating, we are, we still have to work with the, with the current definitions. It has been somewhat ironic is because this is par for the course or par for tonight. We're, we're doing some research on public utilities and how other localities define them. And we're finding fairly commonly, they exempt all Dominion or all major transmission lines from their definition of public utility. And I started, starting to realize why they do that. It's, in my opinion, it's contrary to state law because it's exempt from local zoning if it's 138, my understanding. It's exempt from local zoning if it's 138 KV or more. It's look, it's exempt from local zoning, but if it's less than that, such as tonight was 115. It's not, but I do find it unusual that some localities are just like, oh, it's exempt, it's exempt, it's exempt. So after sending out 60 some odd mailings posted to the property, knows fully, I could sort of start seeing, understanding their rationale sometimes joking, of course, when I say that. But that, that's essentially what we had for you tonight. What I'm anticipating is, is having more time to develop the definitions and have something for y'all that we, we hopefully can to be instructed in May to take it to public hearing. That's our next step. We have, we obviously have some discussion. I'm not sure 11 o'clock at night is the best time to do it, but with that being said, we will have additional discussion. But with either of May or, or the near future, we will get to a point where the planning commission can direct staff to take a public hearing. We will follow up accordingly and do newspaper ads in the, in the local newspapers to, in order to hold that public hearing.
Chris, summarize that briefly. We're not actioning tonight.
No, no action is required this evening.
We will soon be required to act.
Yeah, absolutely. If it's the pleasure of the planning commission, they could direct the next step would be to redirect. Well, next step is the discussion. But there's a step after that, once it's consensus of the planning commission is that it's direct, direct staff to advertise for a public hearing.
Got you, got you. Okay. And what are we supposed to do? Hopefully this discussion is not going to happen 11 o'clock tonight.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Probably be at the next meeting. Yes.
Okay.
I mean, um. We want, if, if I wanted to do a line by line comment on this. Where would it go? Who, I mean, how would it be? Would that be something we could discuss at the, at that future meeting?
Absolutely. Yes. I mean, you, you could send it directly to, to the other members of the planning commission. Of course, I would be, I would encourage you to share that with staff as well. You could send it to the board of supervisors, really your prerogative, how you want to get that out. Yes.
I mean, I just, I mean, from, from the joint meeting that we had before, you know, I mean, I know a lot of the things I've brought up, I still don't, I haven't given up on them yet.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. At least to talk about before, it's just the consensus. That's the, that's the beauty, if you will, the consensus of the planning commission making a recommendation to the board of supervisors.
And I've said this from the beginning, it you're after the worm run solar thing. It was that project. That piece of land with the current rules. This changes the rules. And I think, I mean, I mean, what I've seen so far, I'm not sure that it changes enough for me.
The only thing I'd request, some commissioner Spreezy is if you send it out to everyone that, that you don't have a, an email discussion amongst all of you. Because that could constitute a public meeting. So.
I'll send it to Chris.
And you could send to the other members, but it, it might be best to send it as individual emails as opposed to having a discussion over email, which runs a risk of being treated as a public meeting. So that's always the safest way. Just send it individually and then everybody respond individually instead of to a group.
There are a few people that stuck around with us 11 o'clock at night. I don't know if you would like to take some brief comments or we can stick around and chat for a little bit afterwards or how, how y'all would like to do that.
Or if everybody is amenable, why don't we have short comments from these gentlemen who stuck around?
If they, yep.
Brief comments?
Max Smith, you know. President of Rockford County. One more time. Okay. Max Smith, President of Rockford County Farm Bureau. Our Farm Bureau Board of Directors has sort of changed his attitude about these summer thing. We had a really good meeting with John Campbell. John come in and talked about grazing the sheep underneath there. We began to realize that it's not really doing away with agriculture. It's changing the agricultural use of the land. I don't care whether prime man or whatever it is, it's changing the use of it. If you allow agriterricks, I think is the word to use. You know, we're grazing sheep underneath there or something underneath those panels. When you listen to John, I will highly advise you all to, to get John, talk to him, let him talk, tell you about the grazing sheep underneath there. It's money to be made. These farmers who come in here and complain about taking away the land. No, change your looks of what you're doing. You're probably going to make more money. Okay. I mean, that's just, I don't know whether you're prepared for me stand up saying that. I think Steve has some remarks. There's some things you're going to have to add to that. You know, like I think Steve's going to talk about, there needs to be a water source. If you're going to graze sheep, you gotta have water. You need electrical outlet. Simple as that. You gotta have the fencing. I've always been about the fencing, David. I mean, I really, you know, let's build a security chain fence, which is look like I'm doing it anyway, but you know, and man, God, you know, these guys are going to make some money. Running sheep underneath there. Okay.
That was pretty brief and thank you.
I'm just going to say I have done about 80% of a rewrite of what I'm seeing. Mostly hopefully to the good that I will send to you all within the next two weeks. I just wanted to get to you before the next meeting. So take a look.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Hard to be brief on a big subject. Mickey Mouse, like y'all don't know who I am. I sent Tony 19 pictures of 19 sites where soil and water on solar has gone badly across the state. I didn't go looking for those. They're just the ones I happened to come across. So I really don't know how many is the total. We're about five years, six years behind where a lot of other jurisdictions are on writing our solar. And we might want to look at where some of those are right now today. Mecklenburg County, big county, south side, bunch of solar, they said no more. And I think what a lot of these counties are running into is when you sell your soul to the devil, don't be surprised when he takes it. There's a lot of stuff that the applicant, the, the result doesn't seem to be living up to the hype. And that really, really, really concerns me. I, I, I had just terribly concerned that this is not going to come off as promised and is going to end up almost like the thing we talked about earlier this evening. That's my concern. But what Max said is correct about what John told us. If we truly want to say these are agrivoltics, then you need to have a sheep and predator proof fence. You need to have a viable water source such as a well. You need to have 110 volt outlets so you can run energy energizers. And you need to have appropriate gates that allow you to access the gate without having a contractor leave the gate open, let your sheep out. Perhaps a double gate that acts like a Sally port. Those things are necessary. When you talk about soil. Engineers and farmers view soil completely different. I'm qualified to say that because I am both. An engineer said, a farmer says the top soil is the soil. The engineer says everything other than the top soil is the soil. If we have a soil plan that is written by an engineer, the soil and the water plan written by an engineer will not support agriculture. It's because we are not trained to do that. If we truly want to retain the top soil, the soil management plan needs to be written by an agricultural soil scientist, not an engineer. I can show you the pictures of what, what happens when you do that. Yeah.
Thank you all. And that was an email that we had passed along. Mr. Hart sent that to Cody and.
Everybody saw that. Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Steve. Absolutely. Thank y'all for sticking around. Yep, thank you.
Gentlemen.
We have one more motion.
Does anybody have a motion to make? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor. I think it's unanimous. That was a joke.
My wife said I gotta.